Madam Chair, the meeting is yours.
Thank you. Good morning. This meeting of the Coventry Town Council will now come to order at 10:01 A.M. Roll call, Ms. Ludwig? Mr. Shockley?
Yeah.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mrs. Dixon, thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. LeBlanc, please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. This was supposed to be a joint meeting of the Town Council and the School Committee. Unfortunately, there was a conflict, but we do have two members of the School Committee with us, Mr. Murray and Mr. Pearson. So, thank you very much for joining us. We do have Mr. Sands from the finance area in the school. We also have Assistant Superintendent Mr. Coward and Superintendent Levis. So, thank you for joining us this morning. Welcome to the public and also, right now, it is 10. Welcome to the public, our Town Manager, Mr. Marchand. And I also noticed that we have all our members of the Town Council with us. So, welcome. We have our Town Clerk. And it seems like we also have a number of our department heads, Mr. Crossman, Mr. Robelad, Ms. Blumenthal. We have Ms. Wu, Mr. McGee, Ms. Martini, and we have Ms. Wigan, and we have Chi Heist. So, thank you so much for joining us today. There's one announcement. We'd just like to mention to the members of the public that there will be a program and event to meet and greet our new Town Manager on Saturday, May 15th, from 10:00 to 12:00 on the front lawn of the Town Hall. In case of rain, the event will be held indoors. This is an opportunity for all townspeople to meet our new Town Manager, Mr. Ben Marchand, and to meet Town Council members, Department Directors, and the Coventry School Leaders. In addition, the Coventry Historic Preservation Commission will also have Coventry Otter Fox on display for browsing, and light refreshments will be available. So, we do hope to see you next Saturday morning from 10:00 to 12:00 at the Town Hall. Now to Agenda C1. May I have a motion to open public hearing?
President Dixon, I just want to confirm, will this allow us to then possibly make an amendment after that to change the agenda order? What I'm looking to do is have public comments start and get opened before we go into the presentations, in case there's anyone from the public that would like to make a statement first.
Once I open public hearing, I will open it up to the public to make any comments they want because it is a public hearing. So, once we have the motion to open public hearing, I will call for any kinds of comments people would like to make.
I'll make a motion to open public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Shockley. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon, for yes, no, nay. The motion passes. We're going to change the order a little bit from last Wednesday. Last Wednesday, we had a presentation by Superintendent Levis. We had questions, and then we had a presentation by Mr. Marchand, our Town Manager. Then we had questions. Today, we will start with any questions that people may want to ask of any member of the panel today. And then we will also, of course, entertain questions throughout the presentations. So, are there any members of the, who are on the attendee list who would like to ask a question?
Madam Chair, there are none at this time.
I'd like to thank those who are attending this morning. Some of them are our usual attendees, and we thank you for your persistence and your dedication to attending these meetings and becoming informed residents. We also have some new people on the line, so that's always excellent. Any questions at all to start off the session?
President Dixon?
Yes.
Can we also just ask the public if anyone would like to make any comments? It doesn't have to be a specific line item question?
Certainly. It's open for discussion with all comments from any member who is attending, which is now 13. I see one from Mr. Clements. Mr. Wazika, could you open it for Mr. Clements, please?
Mr. Clements has been brought in. Please state your name, spell your last name, and your address, please.
Josh Clements, C.L.E., M.E.N.T.S., 10 Gentry Farm Drive. Thanks for not having to count me down at the end of the meeting and taking public comments at the beginning. Really appreciate it. Also appreciate Saturday morning ability to call in. Weekdays are hectic. So, thank you, Mr. LeBlanc, for suggesting this. Had the joy of just finishing up, listening to the YouTube of last Wednesday's session, reviewing the budget. Appreciate all the work. I think great amount of transparency. And I think that both School Committee, Town Council are doing a great job. I don't know how to gauge more involvement, you know, looking at the recent election in District 4. You know, there were 66 people that turned out to vote for Town Council, so it's not a good indication of civic involvement. Not any discredit to, you know, new Councilwoman Lima, and congrats on your election. But let's see how we can get more community involvement. I know I'm trying to outreach to people and spread the good news. There's good things going on. It was great to hear about all the good things that School Committee and Town Council have done. So, thank you for the work. Looking forward to the vision of the future. Let other people talk if they want. I've got a couple of questions and/or further comments.
Okay, since there are no other hands, do you have any other comments? Mr. Clement?
I think as a vision, and you know, Member Shockley, you know, gave some comments from one of her, we'll say, you know, district members or, you know, residents, right? You know, how do we focus on the improvements and the good things that are going on, get that out there, and leverage the great natural beauty that Coventry has, right? So, the bike paths being extended, how do we leverage that and promote businesses along the bike path? Encourage people to come to Coventry and visit, expand our businesses, and use that both to encourage people getting outdoors. Everyone's enjoyed the outdoors, I think, in the pandemic, being outside. I hear it every time on this council meeting, people extolling or enjoying the benefits of the bike path. Let's leverage that to make Coventry like a recreation-driven community and promote the businesses along it.
Thank you very much for your comments. And of course, everyone knows that I'm on the bike path almost every day, walking, so I thoroughly enjoy it. And I enjoy seeing the variety of people who are out there pushing carriages, roller skating, bicycling, running, walking, doing whatever they can do to enjoy the outdoors. And we do have quite a treasure. And of comments, of course, to Ms. Blumenthal, whose team keeps the bike path very clean on the section that Coventry is responsible for. It makes it a joy to be on it. Any other comments?
Another comment, right, and I appreciate the direction of the town with both the solar facility being put in on the landfill, the attention paid to the windmills, and the challenges out in District 1, and just the School Committee towards moving with renewable energies, right? So, the future is renewable energy, solars, and that implementation. One thing I've heard repeatedly in Town Council meetings and in the budget is the cost in wear and tear on vehicles. Again, specifically with police vehicles, right? Oh, they sit idling for a long time. It's a lot of hours, right? That's something that doesn't occur in electric vehicles. So, how can we shift our spending towards, again, more efficient and longer-lasting vehicles or that don't suffer from those wear and tear, right? I think it's a way to reduce costs long-term for fuel as well as maintenance. So, I think that's something that the town should look into as towards purchasing new vehicles, whether that's on the School Committee side or within the town.
Thank you for your comments, and we always enjoy having you as a participant on these calls. And we're happy to see that even though you're not able to attend meetings in the evening, it's really like a role model because all of these meetings are recorded. They're on YouTube, and they can be watched at any time whenever any resident has time available. So, thank you. Are there any other hands raised right now? I don't see any. Okay, just remember, we're going to start our presentation with Mr. Levis, who will present the Coventry Public School Budget and also comments. And we call that anytime during the presentation, raise your hand, and we can allow comments. Mr. Levis, would you share your screen, please?
All right. Good morning, everybody. Nice to see everybody's smiling faces on this Saturday morning. So, I was able to follow my normal Saturday routine, got up early in the morning, and went to breakfast at 7:00 o'clock. So, you know, hopefully I have the energy to push through this, but I want to appreciate everybody's support. And I'll start off by saying I'm very optimistic with just the working relationship with the School Committee and the Council. And I do believe, you know, how we handle ourselves, our language is so important. And I want to, you know, thank each and every one of you. I want to thank the Committee again for supporting a budget that we put forward to address the students' needs and families' needs, especially coming out of a pandemic. We know these are challenging years. This is going to be a challenging year, but we also know that with the additional influx of funds that we have from COVID funds, federal funds, S.R. 1, 2, and the American Recovery Plan funds, that if we use them strategically, we know we can make a difference moving forward. Just want to highlight a couple of things. And again, this is a same presentation, maybe a little, this is the same budget sheet, but it might have made a couple of changes on our presentation as we move forward. We want to highlight here is that we're asking the town for $1,883,144. We were level funded last year. You know, the pandemic has been horrific, but it allowed us to have savings or fund balance, which we've used $1.5 million this year to get through FY '21. And we're planning on using $700,000 next year. I know we've had conversations with Mr. Marchand and Ms. Mills about, is this truly a balanced budget? And I'm looking at this in terms of what our expenses are, what our revenues are moving forward. And if we had to submit something to the Auditor General, as we've done in the past, we would submit that this is how we are going to get through next year, using our surplus or the school department's fund balance from the savings, really from FY '20. You'll notice that our original expectation for state aid was to be level funded, which was about a $900,000 decrease in FY '21 from FY '20, but we had a $600,000 increase. So, we still haven't seen the final numbers from the state and what the governor will approve and what the legislature will ultimately approve, but we believe that this is accurate. And again, I want to offer, as I did last time, if any of the citizens or any individuals want to come out and meet with myself and Mr. Sands or Mr. Coward to talk about curriculum and other educational work that's going on in schools, please reach out to us. I want to thank Ms. Lima. I know she was just elected, but she's going to come out and meet with us this week. So, I want to thank you, you know, for taking the time to meet with us. These are the priorities of our FY '22 budget. Obviously, we need to address student, academic, social-emotional needs post-pandemic. You know, I've seen some comments made or people have shared with me, you know, the schools are supposed to be just focused on academics. I disagree. We need to focus on the whole child and the entire family. Think about yourself. If you have things going on in your family, you know, you know, health issues with someone that you love yourself or other issues that are going on in your life, they impact your ability to do what's in front of you. So, we need to take care of the whole child. So, we put as much emphasis, I believe, on social-emotional and wellness as we do on academics, so our students can perform. We are going to continue to expand learning opportunities for all students. And you'll see when I get into a few other slides, there's some exciting work that we're doing this summer around our Career Technical Education Center. We definitely need to maintain the current level of services coming out of the pandemic. Part of the appropriate use for the American Recovery Plan funds is to make sure that we can continue to maintain services and employees. And that's a document, I believe, I shared with the, both the School Committee and the Council. We are continuing the work on our profession, on our curriculum work. There had been, you know, four or five years ago, we had curriculum that had not been worked on for 16 years. One of the areas, health, was over 30 years. We have a curriculum cycle in place. We're actually doing the work. We're seeing the difference it's making. We will definitely see the difference it's going to make in our test scores. And I want to thank Mr. Coward and our teachers for, and our administrators for all that work. If we're going to focus on curriculum materials, what students need to know, we need to focus on our educators. They're our greatest resource. Our staff is the greatest resource. And we want to make sure that we're working on targeted professional development for all staff to give them the knowledge and the ability to implement. We did, example I used last time, is we did a lot of work with our custodians. There were a lot of sanitation, disinfecting protocols that needed to be put in place. And so, Mr. Martin did a great job working with all of them to make sure that they understood what the expectations are by the CDC, the Center for Disease Control. And that's an example of professional development for all staff. We definitely want to increase our CT enrollment. We have an incredible summer program that's been put together that we haven't shared yet. I'll talk a little bit about later on. We've been advertising, if you watch Channel 10, you know, Channel 10 has the largest reach of Southern New England. We have ads that are running approximately 10 or 12 times a week on all of their affiliate stations. We are working closely with 105.5, Chris DiPaola and John Parenti. And we have several ads that run throughout the day that highlight some of our graduates, but also talk about our programs, specifically our regional credit. We have a maintenance requirement that was put in by the state. It's a Red Island General Law 16-7-23. Basically, what it says is that in FY '22, 2.5% of our operating budget needs to go towards maintenance. And they've identified what maintenance includes. In FY '23, 3% of our operating budget. So, one way or the another, we have to fund that. And this year, it was funded by taking housing aid from the town and putting it into our, into a reserve account for the school department. And we will be spending that money, I believe it's about $439,000, by June 30. We want to partner with the town and with the community to understand that, that this has to be met. And then finally, we'll talk a little bit about using the federal funds, COVID funds, to provide interventions and address our deficit. These are the budget increases, the major increases, contractual increases, approximately $735,000. Additional staffing positions in the local budget, and I'll explain that when we get into staffing. That's approximately $343,000. We say approximately because we are still looking at enrollment. And what we do based on most of our core, most of our staffing is based on, teachers is based on enrollment. We look at elementary classrooms. We look at, you know, kindergarten registration. We look at, you know, grade, every single classroom. We have a maximum cap of 22, up to 23 in K to 2, and it's 25 grades, 3 to 5. And we have 27, 28 in our middle school and our high school. And over the years, we have reduced our number of teachers, and we've increased our class size. And I think last time I offered, anybody that wants to come in, we can work it out. It's more challenging during COVID, but I'd love to see our classrooms. Again, many of our schools were built in the 60s and 70s, some modifications in the 80s. Our newest school is Washington Oak, that I believe was 2002, 2003. So, in our teachers, all of the unions were asked to come back to the table by the previous leadership, Town Council leadership, and our unions both came back to the table. In fact, we will be going before the council and executive session on May 24th with our SRP contract. But we had full-blown negotiations. Our teachers, we had to get a half-million dollars in savings for FY '21. And again, we had many language changes that benefit us and also changes around healthcare. Both the co-share increased, and we, the plan design also changed, which hadn't been changed in approximately nine years. We have an increase in out-of-district tuitions for charter schools, for CT. Our transportation contract for student transportation, this is in district, is approximately $200,000. When Mr. Clements was talking about efficiency, one thing that's important to note is last year, we received, our bus company, Ocean State, purchased all brand-new propane buses, which, while they're not electric, I think they're much more efficient in terms of how they use fuel. And for our students, if you've ever ridden on those old diesel buses and you're picked up in the first 20 minutes, the heat takes 20, 25 minutes to come on. Propane buses, the heat comes on immediately. So, in cold winter mornings, students are being picked up and the heat's on immediately. So, it may not seem like much, but to a child or to a parent, putting their child out in the cold, knowing they're going to get in a warm bus is significant. And then finally, the maintenance increase in FY '22 is approximately an increase of $410,000 over the 2% increase, maintenance requirement in FY '21. So, those are the major areas. So, we do have new staff, and this is the, anytime we put on new staff, we get that approved by the School Committee and typically because it's not budgeted. Our School Committee approves the budget, and if we have to add to the budget. So, we're presenting these as additional staff, and they are. These are going to be new staff. New in terms of, in the past, we had reduced, you'll see the Vision of the Graduate Advisor. I forgot to mention on my initial slide, it was a diagram on the right called Vision of the Graduate. This is something that was put together driven by our NIASC accreditation last year, two years ago, when we started the process. And there's going to be a presentation, thank you, Dr. Dixon, on May 24th, to the Council that will explain the vision of the graduate and how that's going to drive everything. It drives the mission, the vision of our school system, and it's going to drive our strategic planning moving forward. So, we needed to put in a part-time Vision of the Graduate Advisor. They'll be based out of the high school, but they're going to work in every school to make sure that we're aligned to this vision of the graduate. And this position replaces what was called a proficiency-based graduation requirement, an individual that helps students make sure that they met their graduation requirements as defined by the state. Because we've changed our process in terms of graduation, some of the requirements, we were able to reduce that position. So, now we're putting it back on with another title. Guidance, we had reduced a position, one position, three, two years ago, I believe, we reduced guidance at the high school. NIASC accreditation said that we're not in compliance. So, we're not putting on a full-time. We're putting on a part-time guidance person to make sure we are in compliance with the AS, that we can do the work we need to do, especially around graduating seniors in terms of recommendations, transcripts, and also working with out-of-district students when they want to come and explore our career tech programs, false guidance in terms of organizing, looking at schedules. The part-time science is a point four position that's going to the middle school. We have revised our middle school schedule to better service students. It's been a work in progress. It's been over two years that the middle school administration, along with the teacher leaders, have been working on it. It's going to provide more instructional time to students, provide more time to teachers that's required by law, state law, in terms of common planning time that we were not really in compliance with. We have the full-time math and full-time reading is to support the additional teachers that are necessary based on the schedule change. And that schedule was presented to the School Committee on April 15th, the change. We have part-time itinerant support, again, to support the schedule, and we have a full-time special educator to address the needs of students with IEPs. That's a federal mandate that we have to make sure that we meet the required time in their IP. We put in these positions, projected COVID of approximately 157,000. We put on eight additional custodians this year to address the needs of our buildings based on sanitation, disinfecting. We don't have lunches in the cafeteria, so we needed to make sure that we had the ability to, you know, support lunches in the classrooms where necessary. We also had to put on additional nurses. You know, last night, if you're on the School Committee, you received an email from me around 10:50. We still have positive cases every single day. Students, obviously, most students are not vaccinated. It's, we've cut our quarantine down from 14 days to 10 days, but it's my responsibility still to make sure I communicate to the School Committee. So, last night at 10:30, we were notified that we had another positive case that's impacting students. We've needed the support of all these additional nurses. I can't tell you the amount of hours that they have spent just doing contact tracing, looking at, you know, who's a close contact, making sure we notify all the families. So, next year, we're not going to have all the COVID nurses, but we, there's no way that I could support reducing our custodial staff. When I mentioned we put on eight additional, I forgot to mention that over the years, we had cut 12 positions. So, yes, we put on eight because of COVID, but these are positions that we've, that we had reduced over, you know, from like 2008 to 2014. So, we have to find a way. We're funding them now with COVID funds, but I do not see in the long term how we can go back and not have these eight positions, especially when we are failing older buildings, systems that are older. And then with the nurses, we found that we want to have two floater nurses. When we don't have nurse coverage, we have to bring in agency nurses that are approximately $95 an hour. So, even though we're using COVID funds this year, we also have monies that are budgeted in terms of our purchase services. And our belief is that having two floater nurses will actually reduce the amount of funds that we typically spend. So, we may be able to put these back in the budget, just shifting from purchase services to these permanent floater nurses. We'll be able to collect that data this year, though, using COVID funds. It's not going to impact the local appropriations.
President Dixon, can I ask a question?
Certainly. Mrs. Ludwig?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Levis, do you mind going back one slide? I just have a quick question on that one.
I don't.
Okay. So, on the bottom for projected COVID?
Yes.
So, are these, are these, these are full-time custodians that we're looking to put back in? Are these, I don't know the appropriate term, union staff? Are these, is it contractor? Is it?
They, they will be union staff. They're part of the SRP union. The funding mechanism is going to be COVID funds for next year.
Okay. And just a, just a general comment, and I've said this before. I have three children in this whole system, and I think my experience with the COVID response has been extremely positive. It's a global pandemic. Knock on wood, my children have not gotten sick. I have not gotten sick. And I think that's directly related to the efforts that, that the school system has done. And so, I am thanking you for recognizing that just because the vaccinations are coming out doesn't mean that the war is won here. So, thank you.
Right. And I appreciate you, Ms. Ludwig, bringing, bringing up this. Because while we're saying that we're funding this with, with COVID funds, we know that it's our responsibility to look forward in terms of sustainability. And I think when I get, you know, go back to this next slide, I'm going to talk about how we're using COVID funds strategically, A, to make sure that we're addressing student and family need, and with, you know, an influx of resources and supports that are going to make a difference starting almost immediately. But B, we also have an opportunity to use our COVID funds to look strategically in how we can, by removing items from operating budget, thus reduce the need moving forward. And I just want to stress those two parts. I haven't heard a lot about the town, and I'm not trying to put the town to the spot. I know right now we're trying to get a budget, but we want the community to understand that, yes, we know we've received significant amount of money, and we're using them twofold. One is to make sure that we address student and family need and staff need immediately, but also recognize we have an opportunity to look at how we can utilize them for sustainability of a budget moving forward, so that we don't have to have these swings. We don't have to have a fight that this community understands that we're putting forward modest requests and that we're demonstrating the benefits that they're receiving. So, I do appreciate you bringing that up.
We have a question from Mr. LeBlanc.
Thank you, President Dixon. I thought it was a great question from Member Ludwig. She asked if this was a union, the custodial jobs are a union, or if it's outside. So, my question is, was there a cost-benefit done related to whether or not we should go, use a third party rather than hiring custodial staff? Because I would just assume that going with a third party, we wouldn't have to do benefits as well. So, I just wanted to ask a question.
Yeah, we just can't do that, though, Mr. LeBlanc. I mean, I guess because they're, the contract has these positions in the contract. I can't arbitrarily remove them. So, there's a, there would be a process where you'd have to, you know, you know, we'd have to go back into a contract or hire people and then just fight with the union. So it's not that, like a, like a private institution, organization. Um, but these are contractual positions. Just like the nurses, you know, we hire agencies. The only reason we hire agencies is because we can't get our own nurses. We, we post for them. We try to hire, but they don't exist. So it's not that simple a question.
When you say the contract has these, so the contract has an additional eight positions in it already?
No, no, it has, it has positions that if we hire, I can't hire a teacher and say, okay, this new teacher is, is not going to be part of the bargaining unit.
Understood. I, I guess I, I thought maybe it was outside of the scope since it's COVID-related and, and we're going to be using one-time COVID costs to offset one-time expenses. That's all.
Yeah, no, I, I, but I think I, you know, again, maybe I'm not clear enough and I'll, I'll try to be more clear. While, yes, we, it was COVID that got us to put these positions back, the custodians. You know, shame on us for cutting twelve positions with, you see, you know, you and I've had conversations, our buildings are failing. When, you know, old, so when you have old buildings, you need to at least ma- keep the maintenance up, right, in terms of the cleanliness. So we put these back on. We didn't have a choice for, for sanitation, but I don't think we can go backwards. So taking it on as superintendent, working with committee, our long-term is we have to find a way to, to maintain these positions when COVID funds gone. We know these funds are gone. Some of them will be gone in FY, you know, September thirtieth of twenty-two. All of them will be gone, have to be utilized by September thirtieth of twenty-three. So we have to find strategic ways of keeping these on. But yes, they're, they're part of the bargain unit. So.
Okay. Thank you.
So Lieutenant Levis, that was my follow-up question. Um, you can use COVID funds to fund these, um, I guess you would call it permanent positions. And what happens after there are no COVID funds? Um, how long can you continue using these COVID funds? You mentioned maybe twenty-two or so. What happens then? What happens to these eight positions?
Well, that's what I'm talking about, Dr. Dixon, is that how we're using them strategically. Um, so you can see the positions we're using to benefit students, right? We talk about building substitutes. We have many building substitutes. Additional ones that we want to fund. Right now, at the secondary level, if we don't have a substitute, our, our, our fill rate, which means how many classes go uncovered, typically is around eighty percent or so, but during COVID, it was down to like sixty percent. What our belief is that if we use COVID funds to offset these building substitutes, we're going to be able to collect data uh, and do a cost analysis like Mr. LeBlanc was, 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 uh, mentioning. And we believe, because if we don't cover, we have to pay what's called coverage. We pay teachers additional funds to use a prep time or a free period that they might have um, to cover classrooms. And so we think this will actually offset that. So that will, you know, we budget for that already. So part of it is looking at these, using this COVID, these one-time funds to look strategically and collect data and say, are these much, are these cost-effective moves? The other part is that, you know, uh, when we talk about, um, I'll give you an example here in the bottom, Chromebooks. We purchased Chromebooks that we needed to purchase to replace our, our, our Chromebooks. We replace them every three years. And a one-time purchase of nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. That's going to remove approximately, we had a three-year lease, which was approximately four hundred thousand dollars a year. And so that's going to be removed from the operating budget. We don't have it on this slide, but another area we're going to be going forward to with the school committee is looking at purchasing minivans. We'd like to purchase five minivans. That will allow us to provide transportation to students that go out of district, or students that move into Coventry, but, but maybe in a foster family and have a right to go to school in Princeton or right to go to school in Pawtucket and they, they want to go there. We have to pay for that transportation. We think purchasing those vans with COVID funds, which is an appropriate expenditure, will allow us to save conservatively three hundred thousand dollars a year moving forward. So right, right away, we showed how we could remove over the next three years, seven hundred thousand dollars a year using COVID funds out of the operating budget. So as we move forward, those are the type of, uh, of, of interventions, you know, the strategic use that we're looking at. And hopefully we come up with more ideas. You know, we'll talk more about some of the cost-saving measures as we get into further slides. So we recognize that this isn't sustainable just using these funds. That's why passing a budget that addresses the needs of both the town and the schools, I think, is significant. And that's why I think, again, hindsight is, is, is twenty-twenty, but I think level funding during an epidemic when, you know, puts us, it has put us in a real difficult position. And to be completely frank, if it wasn't for COVID funds, this would be a completely different conversation around budgeting um, for the school department at least. So this gives us hope. I mean, the council gives us hope. The COVID funds gives us hope in terms of being able to come up with, uh, sustainable budgets moving forward.
Um, we, we have a question for, or hand up from Mr. Murray.
And actually, I'll, I'll take it to, uh, Councilwoman Shockley. She had her hand up first and then I'll.
Mrs. Shockley.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Um, I just wanted to speak to the building maintenance. Um, you know, I, I think everyone understands that the reason people join the council is because they're members of this community and I'm a parent in this community. And I'm being able to see the difference between a building that's newer, um, and has more capabilities as far as wifi and being able to utilize your computers with a plug in school. So I have a child who was quarantined from Washington Oak and he had full in-person learning where the wifi never went out and he never got kicked out of his classroom and it was something his teacher had the ability to do. And then I have a child who goes to the middle school where one of his classes, um, and I really appreciate Mrs. Petros being able to conduct the class from the room she was in virtually so that my child could understand genetics, which I would not have been able to explain to him. And and I was, it was explained to me that there are building, there are rooms in that school where the wifi capabilities just aren't there. Um, and I know that E-rates are being used in order to increase those capabilities and that the money spent on this is actually very important to improving our children's education as the world becomes more digital. So I just want to point out that these are things that, as a parent, we're really able to see ourselves. Um, you know, I'm not sure if you're not involved in the schools, if you'd, um, be able to have this firsthand information. So I just wanted to put that out there. Um, and also put out that, you know, before I was on the council as well as now, there's never been a time that I reached out to my children's school where I didn't get outreach back. So please, if you're having any issues or have questions like this, because I didn't understand the wifi issue in the middle school, reach out and ask. Um, so make sure that, you know, you're being a huge proponent of your child's education.
Thank you. Mr. Murray.
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, uh, bounce off the point on the, uh, the custodial staff and that, that I just wanted to counsel them though. We did have the discussion at the school committee level. Um, I asked a question, you know, I, I said specifically like we're, we're using these one-time funds and the hope is that we're going to keep these positions. So I want you to know we're having that dialogue, but what's our alternative? Do we, do we cut the custodial staff now? The COVID is not over. Right? So we're using some of these funds to keep them on with the hope we'll be able to keep them on in the future. But as you know, we have a finite amount of funds. Right? And I want the public to know this because the expectation shouldn't be that we're just going to keep adding, right? We do understand the need, we need to work within our means. The difficulty is that we don't know what the world will be in two years, right? We don't know if COVID's still going to be an issue. We don't know where state funding is going to lie. We don't know somewhat where local funding is going to lie. So we have to make the best determinations we can at this time. So the plan forward right now is to keep the custodial staff, which are in the buildings, many of whom are in the buildings now. Keep the buildings safe and clean. I understand the rationale and, and I think it's a valid point from Mr. LeBlanc. Like, do, do we look at all their alternatives to, to bring them in? The truth of reality is the support-related personnel, bringing in permanent staff on a day-to-day bas- basis really just doesn't make sense practically, but also we, we do have a union, right? So um, these are our highest cost positions. Obviously, our teachers are paid typically much more. Um, but these are, these are logical to bring in as SRP. If we had clean care like we did on the middle school and we had the problem, you bring in a one-time, you know, cleaning crew to do that. That, that makes sense. Um, and we may have to do that in the future to, if we encounter, you know, COVID-related issues again on, on one-time basis. But I just want the, both the council and the public to know that we at the school committee level are asking these same questions. And what I've said is, what I'll say continually is, we have to work within a, within our means, right? If we get to the end of the COVID funds and we just can't do that, then we have to pick our priorities, right? And that may mean laying off some of these staff, um, at some point, but we won't know until we get there. I just, I, I don't want the dialogue to be that we're just bloating the budget because right now this makes sense, but we know that we're, we may have to peel back at some point. That's all. Thank you.
Yeah. And just to piggyback back on what, um, Mr. Murray said, we've said all along that these positions funded by COVID, while we're stressing with the need of these positions, um, we know that they could all go away when COVID funds. So we've been clear about that all along. And, and to your point, Ms. Shockley, about E-rate, something that's on the slide, but you know, most people are aware, we had a ransomware uh, back in July of two thousand and nineteen and we were able to use, uh, funding that we received from insurance to, uh, move forward and, um, to, um, complete. By July first, I've been told, our wiring, if you go in the middle school now, you'll see all of the connect, the, 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 um, the wiring, I'm trying, I'm drawing a blank here, the, the, the points in every, every classroom for the wireless. They're not live yet, but, um, we should have, uh, a completely different wire, wireless system in all of our buildings. The last one to be done will be the high school once students are out. But by sometime in July, that'll change. We weren't able to do live stream, not that we believed it was the best. Um, you know, a teacher staying in front of a classroom is not the best instructional practice. We know that today. But we weren't able to have our teachers come in and do that because of our capability of our wireless uh, system in, in our, in our schools. We cannot hold a Zoom meeting in our high school or middle school with all of our teachers because of, uh, the, the wireless and, um, you know, uh, that work was done in the nineties. In fact, uh, Jay Longley that did a presentation with our director of technology, um, Mr. Murphy, they did that at our, uh, last school committee meeting. Uh, he was a student here in our career tech and actually helped do the wiring with the National Guard. So it's long overdue, but we are being creative with the, with funds that we have to make sure that we keep the focus on what's in the best interest of students.
I have a one.
I would like to point out that there's a member of the public who has their hand up.
I don't see, and I'll have to go. Mr. Wazika, can you bring in the member of the public?
I can.
Thank you.
Scott, Scott, please state your full name, spell your last name and give your address, please.
Uh, hi, thank you. Scott Belivo, B-E-L-I-V-E-A-U, um, sixty-five Teague Drive West, Coventry.
Go ahead, Scott. It's a pleasure having you with us this morning. What is your question?
Um, so more statements, questions, and I've just been listening to this overall and just want to explain that like my family and I, we moved to Co- well, my wife and I moved to Coventry before our two little ones were born. We have a four-year-old and a two-year-old and we've, since COVID, we've taken them out of daycare. We've had a home nanny. We brought them back into a daycare setting and we understand COVID is a very unfortunate thing of the world that we're all dealing with and this, that and the other thing. And as I listen to this conversation around a COVID budget and where we can place different types of custodial staff or substitute teachers and this, that and the other thing, and I, I listened to some of the plans for, for personnel. Um, and the comment was made, we don't really know what COVID will bring. Will it be around next year? Will it be around the year following? I work in the healthcare industry and to quite honestly, COVID's not going to go anywhere. My personal opinion, I'm not a, I'm not a doctor by any means, but I just don't see it going away and it's going to be something that we deal with every year going forward, just as the flu. Um, one of the things my wife and I said to each other when we moved to Coventry was, is this going to be our permanent residence? And truth being told around our school systems. Um, school systems, the high rate of our taxes and, uh, things of that nature, which ultimately are, they're going in the right direction. Um, but at the same time too, I think there's a lot of room for improvement. And when my four-year-old and my two-year-old come to, you know, elementary school, followed by middle school, followed by high school, I think the question really would be, is it, is this the place for us? Is this the place for their education and things of that nature? And when you look at specifically going back to the comment, will COVID be around? What will COVID look like? I don't think anyone knows that answer. And when we, we as homeowners do things to our home, to upgrade our home, to keep our home up to par with our wants and with our needs and things of that nature and driving around, for example, I'm a T-ball coach and a soccer coach here for my son's, uh, my son Dennis. And long story short, we, I go to all these different schools and these different facilities and things of that nature. A lot of the infrastructure is very old. And my, I guess my concern and my question really lies around hiring proper personnel, but more importantly too, like the vans, for example. Wouldn't that money be best used in upgrading our schools with UV type of ventilation systems and doing building upgrades and things of that nature for longevity? Or am I, am I out? I think I'm, I'm just concerned about how in, just how we're moving forward as a community? When we're looking to do some specific things, when to me, again, and I don't have kids in the school system yet, but and truth, truth be told too, like this, the reason, you know, this, this intro, this conversation and topic interests me was based on the fact of our, uh, our, the housing market, right? And, um, I'm not looking to move, but, uh, I've been approached and would I sell my house and for how much? And this, that and the other thing. And the question is, well, if the price is right, you know, and I'm not looking to move, but if we were to move, it would move to a place where the infrastructure is new. Um, you drive down Main Street of Coventry, uh, you know, and it's, it's all old buildings and a lot of them, I mean, look at Benny's, for example. It's just been sitting there like, and I know that's not your responsibility. I'm just stating examples of what our town looks like and what I want my town to look like, and that includes the school system. And I think it's very important and it kind of goes back to really where I'm trying to wrap up here from utilizing the funds to upgrade what we have versus bringing on substitute teachers and things of that nature to utilize a COVID fund where if COVID didn't exist, what would you be doing? And how would you be bringing those individuals on staff?
So Scott, those are, those are great points. Um, a couple of things. One is I'd love to have you come in and meet and we could have a more holistic conversation about the school district and, and the buildings. I mean, we've received two hundred thousand dollars for, for capital, you, you know, the presentation, I'm sure Mr. Marshawn will talk about. There's a conversation about half a million dollars of capital to go, um, discussion was around the town's needs. We've received two hundred thousand dollars that I have records of for over like twelve years. Um, and this will be, you know, year thirteen, uh, where it'll be two hundred thousand dollars of, of, you know, total uh, over thirteen years. So there hasn't been money put into the schools and the infrastructure. We, just for around air quality, we've done a lot of work. We were one of the first districts when COVID hit. We took criticism for it to have, uh, air quality, uh, engineers, HVAC experts called Creative Environment Corporation out of, uh, Princeton, and they went through all of our buildings. We're doing that work, our HVAC work. We have, uh, there was a comment made by somebody. We have, uh, HEPA filters that we receive from the state. We were fortunate that we got a hundred and sixty of these HEPA filters that will address the need of any classroom that go in. We have ninety-five air scrubbers. Um, we're doing balancing work right now in all of our, our standalone back systems in different rooms. We have about four hundred and sixty-two of them throughout our school to make sure that the, uh, the proper cubic feet of, of air exchange is taking place. When, when we find out the estimate is twenty-five percent of those rooms won't have that, we're going to put those HEPA filters and those air scrubbers in there. Um, we're having ERV systems, which are air exchange systems, put in three of our, uh, four of our elementary schools for the center areas, the cafeterias, libraries. We found out this year, Western Coventry had a section eight or ten classrooms that had no ventilation because we, they ran out of money when they were putting these systems in place. So there's a history here unfortunately where there hasn't been the upkeep. We've addressed air quality. Uh, we should be in really good shape when we open school next year. But these substitute teachers, we need, we need individuals in front of our students. And you're right. I don't know, I, I don't remember the comment being made, but we have no idea. The governor's saying that, um, you know, we plan on wearing masks next year. Um, we don't know if we'll follow the same COVID protocols. I don't think we're saying it's going to be away, but I think it's going to be probably less restrictions than we're doing now, but that's why we see the value in keeping additional nurses. And that's why I've stressed that I can never see us going backwards. Um, you know, shame on the district for cutting twelve custodian positions, especially You know, shame on the district for cutting 12 custodian positions, especially when you have aging schools. So I, I, I agree with everything you're saying, but I look at our schools much more than the buildings. Our schools are the people. When you talk to most parents, especially elementary parents, they love their school, they love their teachers. I just met with, for the PTA, PTO presidents Wednesday night and they all were, you know, despite the pandemic, they love their schools, they love their teachers. So I, I hope you're able to connect with people within the schools and we need to improve all the infrastructure and to fight for a budget, be level funded during a pandemic. You know, I think some of the council members and I know school committee members have said, you know, people have to figure out the community that they want to live in and you know, and that's what we're trying to do here, put forward a budget, be honest about the funds. I mean, it would be a completely different conversation if we didn't have the COVID funds. That, you know, definitely. But it, but the fact is that we do have them for a period of time. And on the school side, and I believe on the town side, we're extremely transparent in how we're spending them. We have public conversations, we're, we're asking for approval for every penny of COVID funds we spend to make sure that it is a transparent public process. So I would just ask to continue, we know this is timely to, to spend time on our meetings, but again, feel free to reach out to me and, and come in and we'll have a, you know, an open, frank conversation and hopefully, you know, our goal is to make it hard for people to not send their kids to Coventry Public Schools. That's the ultimate goal. When parents decide they want their kid to go to a private school, I want that to be an extremely difficult position to put them in. And that's, that's our goal. We have incredible staff across the board and you know, I think we're, every day we're doing what we need to do to, to improve the services that we deliver. So I appreciate your comments and, and your feedback.
Yeah, very welcome. If I may too, to say one last thing, I, I fully believe and respect the, you know, the, it's, it's the people, it's the staff, it's the teachers, it's the administration. I, I understand that wholeheartedly. And just getting back to what I mentioned is that, you know, my kids were in a daycare outside of Coventry from six months old till last March and it was in West Warwick. And the facility was one that, you know, you walked into it, it had a stench, it was, it was a daycare. The people were good, the people were not great, but the people were good. And then things got worse and fortunately, COVID did happen from that perspective because it was time to take one person from that school or that daycare setting who was absolutely fantastic with my kids and we brought her in and we hired her as our nanny. Fast forward to a year to where we are now, that individual recently left us. She went to work for another daycare setting up in Smithfield, Rhode Island. But more importantly, we moved into right outside, right on the Coventry-West Greenwich line, we moved to yep, I'm a bad dad, I can't even remember the name of it. Something too. Over by Route 3, right by 95.
It'd be Munchkinland?
Yes.
Yeah, Munchkinland 2.
Yeah, we moved to Munchkinland 2. Thank you, thank you.
I'm a really good mom.
And Munchkinland 2 is a, I don't know how new, I don't know how new the building is, but it's a newer building. It's clean, they're very professional, the way that they're handling COVID is fantastic. And I guess where I'm going with this is that like, and I don't know because I'm not there, but that type of infrastructure makes me proud to drop my kids off at that daycare. We get daily updates through a, through, you know, a technolo- technological system. We get pictures of our kids playing with their other friends out on the playground, things of that nature, which we didn't get before. And I don't know if Munchkinland was, how long it's really actually been there, but I do know that it's a much better infrastructure from where we came from. And as a taxpayer and somebody who, again, I don't, I've upgraded my home, we have a beautiful backyard with a pool. I'm not looking to go anywhere. If we did go somewhere, both my wife and I pretty much work remote, it wouldn't be for us, it would be for our children. And it would be for what our children get to experience going forward when they do get, and, and, and truthfully, honestly, even as young as kindergarten, first, second grade, and I've heard great things about our elementary schools. It's the buildings and the infrastructure that personally, when I'm at these facilities coaching, I look at them and I'm like, I'm, I'm 40 years old, I look at them and I'm, and I did not grow up in Rhode Island, I grew up in Connecticut. But I look at them and I'm like, that's, that reminds me of my childhood. But then, for example, I was in Virginia at my sister's place on this past weekend where she is a principal of a middle school and their building is brand new and it's gorgeous and I've never seen anything like it. And that's where I look at things and I just say to myself, I feel, even though, you know, we're both, or my sister and I were both living in 2021, when I come home to Rhode Island, I feel like I'm living in like, honestly, I feel like I'm living in like the, the late 80s, early 90s. And when I go there, it's like, wow, where did all this come from? And it comes from their taxpayers, it comes from government grants, it, it's, imagine it's the same type of thing here. And it just goes back to infrastructure and I think that's what's also important. And what's going to make our teachers and our staff happier is also the environment that they get to go to every day as well.
Right. So I, I, I don't think you're gonna, I'll speak, I can only speak for myself. I, I agree wholeheartedly to what you're saying. We have a, we just, I'm not going to take away thunder, but we were in the process of getting necessity of a school construction process, which is looking at our buildings and we've come up, we have an incredible school building committee, we've come up with plans that'll touch all of our schools. We know that the, to, to address the needs of our community would be maybe a 25 or 30-year plan, honestly. Some of our schools, you, you said 80s and 90s, you're being gracious, because some of our schools are 60s and 70s.
Yeah, I imagine so.
Yeah, no, 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 and we have two outlets in the classrooms and I think that, you know, Ms. Shockley, Ms. Shockley was alluding to that. So we're on board. I, I guess I would ask you to keep involved, keep engaged and kind of look at the rest of the slides as I go through them, because hopefully we highlight that. Demonstrate that despite the age of our buildings and the facilities and, and this is across the town. You know, even our newest building is 2002 and it has some need for, for repairs. That's Washington Oak Elementary School. So I appreciate your comments.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, thank you, Scott, for your viewpoint as a, as a parent and as a resident of Coventry, we appreciate it. I do want to do a follow-up question. I'm always looking at sustainability and I've talked about this for years now. And we've had good conversations about the use of fund balance, whether that's good or not good, but we've talked about that. We've talked about the use of COVID funds. And Mr. Murray has talked about how the school committee has engaged in discussions relating to setting priorities. So my question is this, if you, are you able to actually develop a budget for the next year? That does not show a deficit? I mean, I'm concerned about how we continue on because.
Dr. Dixon, I think, I think you have a big part in this as the county council president. I mean, you're asking me for next year. You know, I think let's push this budget and, you know, I hear everybody talking about a three to five-year plan, which is great. But when we don't know what we're going to get from local appropriations, last year was zero, it was four, it was two. So I think we have to be realistic. We can tell you what we think our expenditures could be.
All right.
And then we can tell you what we need for revenues to support that.
I managed to get this on.
I think we're, we're hearing some type of conversation. Okay.
So I'm, I'm just saying is that I, I, we know that we have to put forward budgets that are balanced and maybe there's a difference in definition of balance, but we have bills to pay, we have, you know, we have programs that we have to run, we need to put teachers in front of students, we have to keep our buildings open. We have to provide transportation to students, students move into Coventry and they go someplace else and there are laws, special education. So the bottom line is that I think, you know, we definitely are focused and, and every year we have yet to not put forward a budget that is balanced and gotten us through despite the challenges we face, both with state funding and with local appropriations. But I'm concerned that if we don't focus on this budget and get this budget approved, that next year's budget, and I've said before, it's going to be a challenge, but we're trying to lay out that despite the challenges, you know, I, I, despite the challenges we face, there's a lot of good going on and that's what I would like to focus on. Obviously, the committee and the council and other individuals can have their opinion. We, but we have not put forward a budget that we haven't been able to, to balance and get through. And we've had challenging times. I'm going to tell you, not only challenging times as a school department, in this community, there's always an additional issue, Fire District, Sewer, Johnson's Pond, you know? So I, I think we need to focus on this budget and knowing, we've said all along that FY23 is going to be challenging, but we're going to tell you all the things that we're doing to try to bring in also additional revenues and cut expenditure. Because there's a lot, we don't just sit here and saying, we need your money, we just need your money. That's not what we're saying at all. We're saying despite the challenges we face, this is what we're doing as a school department. So that I hope Scott is, would be impressed with what's going on. Despite the age of our buildings, you're absolutely right. You know, I say this all the time, Ms. LeBlanc, you know, brought this up to me the other day. I'm always saying, well, looking at the ceilings in Blackrock, you know, if any cafeteria, if we went into a restaurant and saw that, we'd make a beeline. And yet people are dealing with this every single day. So I would like to focus on this budget and knowing that, and you have experience with me, knowing that we're always focusing on next year, we're budgeting every single day. But we've got to get through this budget, we need to be, you know, we need, we don't even know what the number is going to be. I'm hoping that, you know, that's something that you guys will have a conversation about. We're making a case for the budget that we've put forward that the school committee has approved. And I'd like to be able to, to do that, you know, instead of always taking a step backwards or a step forward. I hope that we can come up with a unified front and push forward on a budget.
I, I, I understand the point of view and I think the point is, is there anything that can be done this year? Moving forward in this budget that helps set you up for success next year? So that you're not in such dire straits again for the following year? That was the point I was trying to make. Is there anything that can be done this year?
And I, I think we've addressed a couple of those things with the Chromebooks. I mentioned about the, the, the transportation, the vans. We're going to talk about other measures that we're, we have going forward and I believe in a, in a future side. So I believe we are addressing that. I've talked about how using those substitute teachers, we, we, we pay overages every year. Now we're using COVID funds, one-time funds, putting in additional substitute teachers, full-time subs. We're going to be able to do an analysis to see, is this more cost-effective than paying the overages? So I believe that is strategic use of the funds. We said the same thing with the, the floating nurses. We cover, we pay for nurses through agencies because we can't get them, because you can't get a nurse up. And when nurses go out, we send students on field trips. We need to have, certain students need to have a nurse with them. And if they have their own personal nurse, if that nurse is out, we still need to send a nurse, so we have to go through agencies. So our belief is that hiring these floating nurses will actually be more cost-effective than what we've done in the past. But the beauty is this year, we're able to use COVID funds to do that. So I think there's a lot of strategies that I have mentioned that we're, we're looking at because we recognize we need to reduce our expenditures moving forward. So we're using COVID funds strategically to do that. I believe we have, and then we'll get into some other areas as I move forward.
Okay, thank you. Mr. LeBlanc has a question.
I just had a follow-up, but thank you, President Dixon. First, I, I just wanted to thank Mr. Bellevue for not only attending the meeting, but also commenting. I, I don't think there was one comment that I, I didn't agree with that he made. Second, I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Murray for his clarification. I, I figured regardless if we're private industry or, or a municipality, that we were able to bring in a third party. And I think he mentioned Clean Care was the company that we brought in last year. I just, I thought that since we were using coded funds, it was a one-time fee. I didn't realize that we bring on these eight custodians and not only for next year, but we want them going on subsequent. So I appreciate all that clarification. Thank you.
And Ms. LeBlanc, I just want to clarify the Clean Care that Mr. Murray talked about, that was brought in by an insurance company. We didn't bring them in. We had ransomware. Our, our middle school system is run by computers, it was down for several days. And there was mold that we had, so Clean Care came in that was hired by the trust to come in. So the school department didn't bring them in, they've come in the buildings, but that, I just want to be clear, I don't want you to think that what I said wasn't accurate. We haven't brought in third parties. We've discussed that before in, in emergency situations. If we couldn't have hired eight custodians and we needed to bring in, then we would have looked at, you know, having to do some type of agency work. So just for clarification, thank you.
A question from Ms. Ludwig.
Thank you. So I, I just wanted to maybe close the loop on the, the COVID questions. We've, we're kind of full circle maybe so that we can move on, so we can go to the next topic. So just to, to, to let you know, the, the way that I'm thinking about this is what I'm going to be going into our discussion with Mr. Marshawn and the other counselors later this month is not necessarily on a per-line item basis, but overall. So my comment was, was about, was about a particular line item that you had for custodians. But just for clarity, i- in general, how I'm thinking about COVID funds is for either COVID-type related expenses, and that should be obvious. Or like you're mentioning, areas that we can spend funds in a one-time manner and not, not rely on them. So I, I can't say which line item to use, just so that the public is aware, I can't pick and choose. I was merely making a comment about my own experience with, with the schools from this year and my, my hope to, to continue seeing that next year. I cannot pick and choose line items, I'm just sharing my, my thought process for how I'm looking at what's being presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Superintendent Levis, have your highlights and accomplishments up.
We, okay, so I'm going to go through these quickly. We talked about early childhood. Mr. Beliveau talked about having young children, it's one of the most important areas, it sets a foundation. Our preschools are rated five-star, that's as high as they go. When Ms. Ahern took over, we had three-star preschools. We also have two state-funded pre-K programs. We received a million dollars, this was a competitive grant over three years. We have two classrooms of 20 students and a full day, no cost to the public, there's a lottery to get in. And that funds our, our, our materials and, and our staffing. We've been focusing on social, emotional learning. What better time than think about all of our experiences and the trauma that we experienced, both in our personal and professional lives? Prior to the, the pandemic, Mr. Robillard, the DHS Director for Coventry came to me, we wrote a grant together, but he was the primary author of this and we received 450,000 over three years to help the community become trauma-informed. We're doing work with all of our staff, training. The goal is to, to get all of our municipal employees trained to understand trauma, the role it plays in their lives, the role it plays in, in, in the lives of youth and to have an, be able to have an impact on, on our culture and our community. We're going to train all of our youth coaches, whether it's soccer or baseball. And, you know, we're going to actually train the school, uh, school committee in the, in the council in, in very shortly. So this is a great opportunity, this is for the community, not just the schools. We received a, a grant from RIDE to look at, it's called multi-tiered systems of support. It looks at how do we address students with social, emotional needs and provide interventions, assessing their need and providing interventions. We have an incredible program called Unified Oakers that Ms. Christine Hoskins, along with several students at the high school started, three years ago, maybe four years now. It, it focuses on acceptance of everybody. The train, it started at the high school, we brought it down to the middle school. This year, even during the pandemic, they were able to go and hold assemblies at elementary schools. There's an oath that students take. In fact, we've been recognized at the high school as a national unified program. There's very few in Rhode Island, very few in the country, and we'll have a ceremony sometime when, as the restrictions, it'll be a ceremony that all of you will be invited to. It's a great honor for our, our community. We have incredible partnerships with CCAP, Tides Family Services, the police, I want to thank EMA, Jill and, and Chief Rick. Yesterday, we held a clinic for vaccination for students 16 and older. We were in conversation of holding, offering clinic for when they reduce the, the age for the vaccine. We'll, we'll support that and offer clinic. Again, these are all voluntary. We work closely with the, the fire districts and Chief Frank Brown and, and Mr. Robillard, Mr. McGee, the libraries, you've heard about the Parks and Rec, the work that we're having in providing some funding for summer programs. We also work closely with the YMCA, Westwood Y. So we have great community partnerships that address the needs of our community. There's been a lot of conversation about the Career and Tech Education Program. Our middle school students have, all now are being. Our middle school students have, uh, all now are being exposed to the pathways programs. Something really exciting is that we're going to be offering a summer exploratory program. We'll be running ads very shortly. It's going to be free to our community. We're going to target students going into sixth, seventh and eighth grade. And it'll allow them to explore all of the wonderful opportunities. We have a great brochure. We just went over yesterday, Mr. Sands met with, uh, Ms. Ferguson. And we talked about the, you know, the funding of it. It's been approved, the funding through our, uh, our COVID funds. So this will be exciting. And again, getting our own students to be more aware, more engaged in terms of what the, the program offers. You know, we want students to be college and/or career-ready. We piloted a program to expose fifth-grade students to CTE. Started at Hopkins Hill. Now we offer it to all of our fifth graders. Going up, spending a day, getting to explore the different programs and cut, walk away with some type, something tangible that they actually produce. This is significant. Over nine hundred of our high school students are enrolled in a career pathway course. So we've been able to expose all of our students. I know everybody wants to know what they want to do when they get out of high school and go to college. But the statistics show, I know College Board said, sixty-five percent of students that go to college change their career pathway at least once, right? About forty percent change their colla-, pathway more than two times. So with, the more we can expose students, the, the better opportunities. I think the better they'll be aligned to what, uh, they want to do as an adult. And then this year, we just celebrated, this is the most we've ever had Skills USA, which is a national, uh, competition. It focuses on national standards. We had seventeen medal winners. Six of them are going to compete nationally. That's the most medal winners we've ever had during a pandemic. We want to increase the numbers of Coventry High School students taking rigorous college-level honors and AP courses. You know, in the last five years, we've doubled the amount of AP course offerings. When you look at the rankings, we'll talk about them in a little bit, the rankings of our high school. A lot of that is how many students actually take AP classes, then how many pass. And there was a cultural thing, and this is just my opinion, but there was a cultural thing here that only certain kids took AP classes. We want to encourage every student to take an AP class. When you take an AP course, you're, 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 you know, exposed to students that have incredible questioning techniques, you know, uh, um, study habits. And, you know, when I first got here, we had programs that were called Applied, and they really weren't connected to the standards. But, you know, these were struggling learners. People felt sorry for them. We were doing a disservice. We eliminated those programs. You know, I think, I don't think there was anybody that really supported them, but that's what we had, had in place. Now, everybody takes a, a, a program that's aligned to college in career readiness. So we need to still change the culture, encourage more students to take those offerings. And then Mr. Coward had talked a lot about this, our high-quality standards in curriculum work. We've done a lot of work. You know, there was comments made about what, you know, what are we doing? We've done a lot of work. We received grants for curriculum work that's purchased our secondary ELA curriculum and also our pre-K curriculum. It allowed us to use funds to purchase an elementary English Language Arts curriculum. Many of our curriculum, uh, materials that we purchased, Journeys, it was a great program many years ago, but recently a nonprofit organization that we part, we're part of called Ed Reports, where they, they're like, uh, consumer reports for curriculum. They assess journeys and said it wasn't high quality. It wasn't connected to all the standards. So now we're going to give our teachers not only the tools, but we're going to give them, I mean, the materials and, and, and the, the resources, but we're going to give them the tools through professional development. So we've completed P Health, ELA and pre-K. And that again was funded by grant money. We are working on social studies, library, world language and music. And, and, uh, we've piloted a program at the middle school, which I think is significant. Our middle school, uh, curriculum materials have all been, um, created by teachers. We have incredible teachers, but now we're going to give them the tools, the resources to make sure it's aligned to the standards. And that we should see our test scores increase significantly over the next few years. We'll be focused on science, art in the, in the special subjects. So there is work being done. This is a cycle. So we're going to repeat this cycle. No longer will we have curriculum that hasn't been looked at at sixteen years. You know, we have to find a way, and, and we're demonstrating that despite the physical, the financial challenges we had, we are moving forward. So this is other accomplishments that we've had this year. There was one just yesterday morning, Kristen Duchenne, um, from Weston Coventry was a golden apple. And, and I've watched many invite, you know, it was incredible because her, her grandmother actually was on, uh, virtually. And, uh, had three winners, you know, Julie Lamar and Louise Matella. We have numerous all-state ensemble musicians this year that were selected from Coventry. We had a gold key winner to the Scholastic Art and Writing Award. We had two National Merit Scholarship finalists. They both came to the school committee. Many districts don't have one. We had two. We have a Hobie Baker Character Award winner finalist. We had an individual that was second-place winner in a Ride App Design Challenge. And she, from that presentation, she met with me, with several of her friends in talking about, uh, inclusion and equity, not only in our schools, but they want to do a club that addresses again in our community. We have two winners in the Jim Landevan, uh, Congressional Art Competition. We have, uh, our artist just entered, uh, Senator Jack Reed's Art Competition. We have the second-longest distance in the national hammer throw in the country this year, the second longest. We had all-state concert participants. Our cheerleaders will be coming to our next school committee meeting. I don't know how that'll work virtually, but they are state champions for the second year in a row. They won the game day championship. We have finalists, uh, Student Athlete of the Year Award. So every school system gets one or two students that are nominated. But now it's down to the, the top ten. And then last but not least, tonight, our football team is, is, uh, competing for the Division Three, uh, Championship. Seven o'clock at Cranston Stadium. I watched the news last night, um, you know, most of the reporters are picking Johnston. So I think that's a good position to be in. It's nice to be the underdogs. And, uh, I'll be there tonight. I, I, uh, rooting them on. So there's a lot that we've accomplished despite all the challenges. And I think we have to celebrate what we've done. It's very easy to, to get caught up in, in the crisis of the moment, which there's many that exist this year. But there's so much that we've accomplished. And we need to stop and just see how far we have come, like I said, despite the challenge. So I'm going to go through this quickly again, this slide, these, this presentation is up on our website. What this shows, and this is eighteen nineteen, it shows that we've made growth in every area that we've increased our test scores. It may not look significant, but we're moving in the right direction. And this is prior to the curriculum work that we've done. Last year, we didn't do the, the Ride Cast testing. This year we did. And we'll, we'll see with the results. I mean, we had a lot of students that were on distance learning. Uh, there are a lot of students that didn't take the Ride Cast test. And my, my concern about it was not, obviously, the students that take the test, when we get the information, it's valuable. Uh, we assess, we look, drill down to individual questions and look at different areas compared to what's being taught in the classroom. So it's, it's very helpful for our, our teachers, uh, to the curriculum work that we do, uh, to the assessments that we, we have, the interim assessments, the formative assessments. But my concern is that these scores will be reported out. And there's, there's, uh, there, you know, uh, we have a lot of students that did not take the test this year. And so they're going to be zeros. The same thing with the SAT. So people can say, you know, that, to me, that's a problem because it's not truly indicative of this community. But you can see that there's been definite growth. And like I said, I believe we'll have significant growth after this curriculum takes hold in both the LA and that. These are just some statistics around ELA that you can see that we've, in, in terms of our ranking, we've increased in four spots. Um, you can see where we are in terms of growth. So that looks at individual student growth compared to the student growth in other districts. You can look at math, the same thing that we've had an increase in four spots from twentieth out of the high schools and twentieth out of the public high schools. And again, our student growth percentile, we're tenth out of the fifty-nine high schools and eighth in terms of the growth percentile in math over, uh, the forty-one public high schools. So it shows that our students are making growth. We know that, you know, this is not where we want to be, that we need to increase. If you look at Massachusetts compared to where we are now, we have a long ways to go. But I, I can attribute a lot of this in Coventry to the lack of, uh, high-quality curriculum. It has nothing to do with the ability of our teachers. And we have a responsibility to give them the resources and the tools. And we're finally doing that. These are some quotes, a week before the pandemic hit last year. It was, uh, I think March fifth. We had a visiting team come to Coventry High School from the ASK. And, uh, these are some quotes. I know Dr. Dixon and Ms. Patton were there for the readout. I think it was significant, very powerful in terms of the feedback that the visiting team gave our high school. You know, and these are just some quotes that you can read. But I, I like the one where, uh, Mr. Medic, who was the, uh, visiting team chair, said, "Not only will Coventry High School set the bar for education as community and state, but also regionally." This is a gentleman that comes from Avon Farms, Connecticut. Well, yeah, it's an extremely affluent community. And he was comparing what goes on and, and as Scott said earlier, we don't have the bells and whistles. You go into our buildings, you look at our, some of our facilities. We have an investment, it's obvious. This year, we're able to keep them extremely clean despite that. But it's the people that make up, and the students, that relationship that makes up our school community. They also talked about the Career Tech nine-hundred students. But what was significant, the very last day, we pulled together, the high school pulled together, um, a unified basketball game. And if you're not familiar, Unified has our, our, um, our athletes who are students with typically intellectual disabilities, developmental disabilities. And then they have their peers, their partners, who are, uh, just our typical students. Uh, a lot of times they're some of our better athletes or athletes from team, but sometimes they're just students that want to assist. So we had our current unified basketball team with our alumni that is some of our transition students, eighteen to twenty-two. And then some students that were in their thirties that had played unified sports. And we had that gymnasium at the high school full of fifteen hundred, almost sixteen hundred individuals capacity. And they said, "You can't fake that." This unified, this spirit, this inclusive atmosphere that we have in our schools is, is so genuine. And they were so blown away by that. And that's a credit to, to every member of our school community. So I think this is significant to see, you know, the, the comments that visiting guests came and said. This is also something that I hope is eye-opening. U.S. World News, um, does the high school rankings, or U.S. News. And twenty-one is Smithfield. Now, I worked in Smithfield many years. Smithfield, you know, is a different community. I think they're third in the state in terms of socioeconomics. They're twenty-one. We're twenty-two. Middletown is twenty-three. Um, Ponte Gansett is twenty-four. And if you look at all of the top schools that are below us, right, in the higher in the rankings, the only one that's a large school like Coventry is Cumberland. Other than that, they're all, like Cranston West is above us. A lot of the schools, you know, I, I have many friends in Cranston, and, you know, Cranston West is, is the place that everybody wants to be. I think it's important that we outperform them. We outperformed Ponte Gansett in our SATs, our graduation rate. And yet we hear so much about it. And I think a lot of it is because of what, um, you know, Scott had said before, we don't have the bells and whistles. Ponte Gansett has a nice new school, small class size. They have all the, the state-of-the-art equipment. And yet we outperform them. And I hope that this resonates with our community.
Superintendent Levis, we do have a question from Miss Ludwig.
Yes.
So, uh, more of a comment. I, I said this on Wednesday, and I'm going to say it again. Um, over the last several years, uh, I have heard a lot of, um, information about Foster Gloucester. Um, and then when the, um, are just saying how, you know, what a great place this is, comparisons, et cetera. And then when Mr. Coward, um, announced that the, um, that these rankings were out a few weeks ago, and I see where we rank, and I think about, um, the number of dollars spent in Coventry. And, you know, member Shockley and member LeBlanc can correct me here. I think we said we're the seventh lowest in the state for, um, uh, I think it was for fiscal, uh, fiscal year, uh, um, eighteen to nineteen, I believe it is when the data came out. I, it just, it blows me away that this, that this is the reality, that we, we are doing better at things like graduation rates and, and things like that versus what I'm hearing on social media or just in the neighborhood when people say, "I'm going to send my kids to another school," or, or this or that. These are the facts. We're getting ranked higher than them. Um, and in my mind, I think about what type of opportunity that presents as well. So thank you for, thank you for highlighting this because I, I certainly have heard a lot about people looking at these other school systems that are ranked lower.
Thank you. Thank you for that comment. And we're not saying this is okay. We want to get into the top ten. We want to get in the top five. We want to be the best. But I believe that what we've laid out in terms of our, our strategies and interventions, are, uh, going to move us in the, are, are moving us in the right direction.
And I would just like to make a comment that when I was on the school committee, I did have an opportunity to talk to parents who wanted to send their children to another high school, most, most commonly Ponte Gansett High School. And I did take out these statistics. And I did point out that actually, uh, we were a better high school in many ways. But sometimes that is not enough. So we need to consider not only what the rankings mean, but what else there is about the culture. What is it about the perception that people have of our schools, uh, that make them turn away from the school when actually we have a far superior alternative? Thank you.
Thank you. And, and just to add to that, the, the, the narrative in this community in the past has not helped. I mean, I, I get taught, you know, many people have come to me about, you know, funding and having to fight for a budget and not having athletics and activities. People write those in their applications to go to other schools. They actually put that down in writing why they want to go. Has nothing to do with the program. It has to do with all the other. And so I think we have an opportunity this year to, to change that narrative. So Dr. Dixon always asks about the three-to-five-year project, projects and goals. And, you know, one thing that hasn't been in this, this, uh, presentation, but I think it, you know, brought up about our infrastructure, there's been incredible amount of work that's been done by the school building committee. And, um, that, you know, is, is crucial to the future of, of Coventry. We'll, we'll never, I, I do not believe, I don't know this, um, you know, I cannot say this with a hundred percent of, of confidence. However, the percentage is the ability to get reimbursement on a bond project. Uh, I don't think we'll ever see as high as, say, fifty-seven percent in, in my lifetime. And so there's an opportunity here to, um, do some incredible work to the infrastructure of our entire school community. That, uh, you know, we have more to, to discuss, uh, you know, I know at our next school committee meeting, and I'm sure at a future town council meeting. But that's crucial to the success of the school department. I, I, I hate to think what would happen if there's no investment in our infrastructure because we are at a tipping point in many schools. And, um, and I can't tell you exactly what that means. But, um, if you're in our schools, uh, you know that there, how much more can we take? You know, how much longer can we exist with two outlets in, in a classroom in, in three of our elementary schools? Strategically promote the vision of the graduate. That is what's going to drive us. I'm excited that that's going to be presented to the, the town council on May twenty-fourth. You see the efforts that we'll be making around increasing Coventry CTE enrollment. Yesterday, Ms. Fer- Ferguson met with an individual. Uh, she and I had met with one of the members of the, uh, Career Tech State Board and, um, connected us with an individual about developing an analytics program. That the way that programs will be approved in the state, they're no longer going to approve them in every region. They'll approve one program in a region. And so we're trying to pilot, we may partner with another school department in analytics program because, um, we see the, such the need for, for organizations, for companies around analytics. It's a high-skill, high-wage program. And I think we're very fortunate that we could have an opportunity in the near future to, to, to pilot that program. So we're constantly looking at our programs, trying to improve them. I think increasing our test scores by twenty percent is not unrealistic within three to five years, based on the curriculum work and the professional development that we're doing. And then to be recognized as one of the top public school departments in Rhode Island, that has to be our goal. There's things, you know, I think there, there, there's a lot of things that we can control and, and keep that laser beam focused on what's in the best interest of students, our staff and families, and, and get there. But we also need the support of this community. We need the support of the council. We all have to agree that, um, everything, all the services that are, that are available to citizens are important. In, in our community, we need to work together. We also have to recognize that, you know, we're constantly critique that school departments take the largest sum of tax dollars. Well, they do. I mean, and, and we put most of that money into people. Well, we do because we're in the people business. It's about providing services to students. But we also need to recognize that, uh, and as, as, as Scott had said before, people move into town, but then they have young children. It's about the schools. And we need to make sure that we, we recognize that. People are paying top dollar in Coventry to move to Coventry. Uh, you know, we don't see a lot of seniors buying these three-and-four-family homes. These are people that pretend to have, that will have a family moving forward. So I hope that we, we work together to, to. So I hope that we work together to create a solid foundation around education and one that's sustainable moving forward. And then finally, I'm just asking people, not telling you how to vote, but I'm saying, you know, we need people, you know, I've spoken to every council person. I know the school committee, we've had these conversations. We need to get those individuals out that didn't come out before, that do value everything that our departments, that our community is provided. And we need to demonstrate to them and get them to share their voice. So I want to thank you for allowing me to give this presentation.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Levis. Are there any other questions from members of the public? Council members. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to recommend that we take a, like a four-minute break, come back at eleven-thirty-five. That way, everyone can get up and get a drink or stretch legs. Please, everyone go on mute, and we'll be back at eleven-thirty-five.
Mr. Wazika, are you still on?
Yes, ma'am, of course I am.
Okay, wonderful. I have to dial in from my phone. So I just wanted to make sure that you didn't force me out of the panel session. I'm calling in from my cell phone number, starting with five-five-one.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, it's eleven-thirty-five. Welcome back, everyone. Mr. Marshant, we're ready for your presentation, but I just want to ask the members of the public, are there any questions that anyone would like to ask before we start the town municipal budget presentation? Mr. Clement, you have a, your hand up. And Ms. Lavoy? Mr. Wazika, could you let Mr. Clement in?
I think I'm here now. Josh Clements.
Okay, go ahead.
Josh Clements, Ten Gentry Farm Drive. I just wanted to follow up on the school conversation, right? It is an investment in people. The teachers make the difference, right? We can talk about having great infrastructure and great schools. And I appreciate the work that was done to confirm the, you know, airflow and everything else. You know, what got me involved in at least listening to the school committee was the safety of my daughter. She started out at Western. I've been nothing but impressed with the teachers and administration at Western. To echo the comments of the parent earlier, right? We get pictures from the teacher. We get daily updates via an app. You know, the teachers do a great job, but I recognize that's an individual experience, right? Every classroom is not the same. Every teacher is not the same. But they do a great job. Investing in the teachers is a way to increase value, increase student outcomes, and make the school district better. It's not just about buildings, but it does sound like there's a strong advocacy here for investing in the buildings in the future through the bonds. So appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Marshant, we're interested in your valuable presentation this morning. Would you like to share your screen?
Apparently. All right, does that look right?
Yes.
Wonderful. So I'd just like to emphasize again that today's decisions will determine tomorrow's opportunities. We find ourselves in a position with the budget that was developed over many, many years. Decisions in the past that were made to build schools, construct roads, provide for police protection and parks. You know, all those investments at one time were brand-new. And today, you look around, and there's not a lot that's brand-new anymore. And it's going to require some investment of resources to bring them up to a standard that people expect and enjoy. And like the other caller or participant indicated, that they have choices of the communities they live in, and they are driven very much by the quality of the schools and the infrastructure and the offerings of the community. So hopefully, the decisions that the community is prepared to make on June tenth with regard to a budget is going to be one that they can be proud of and recognize the value of the services that they are supporting. This year, we've proposed a balanced budget. It proposes an increase to the levy of three-point-nine-five percent in order to cover the increasing costs of good services, contracts, and other obligations. This represents one-hundred-and-twelve-million-six-hundred-sixty-four-thousand-six-hundred-eighty-nine in revenue. Those expenditures are split between the municipal operations side and the schools' operations side. And you can see the breakdown there, and it does balance. I've seen or heard some questions about how will the level of funding impact my services? What happens if we vote to reduce the proposed amount of revenues to the town or the schools? And it's really difficult to quantify when you're talking about the conditions of the roads. If we assume that ten years ago, the roads were in perfect condition, and we just cut the funding so that the quality went down by two percent a year, no one can really tell the difference of a two-percent drop in quality. But if you look back ten years ago, if you're down to eighty-two percent quality from new, people start to notice, and they say, "Oh, wow, you know, ten years ago, the roads were so much better." And that's kind of how we get there now. I doubt that the roads were a hundred percent ten years ago, but wherever they were at, the indications are that it's not as, they're not in as good condition as they were before. So that's going to require an increase in the investment in order to maintain the level of services. The funding changes to the town services over the last few years, you know, just to give a comparison between the fiscal year nineteen-twenty, where every department saw a modest increase to maintain their service levels, many departments experienced cuts when the tax levy was not increased for twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one in our current year. And that resulted in less resources going to programs and to maintenance and operations. Now, most people haven't noticed any change in their level of service this year. A lot of it is obscured by the effects of the COVID pandemic and closures. So the programs that they lost at the library or in the parks, maybe they would have lost anyway due to COVID, but the funding isn't there to bring them back. And so in the proposed budget, we do propose to restore the funding to these other departments that provide services directly to our residents, like the library, public works, parks, and human services. And as you can see, the Parks and Rec budget was not fully restored from what its levels were in twenty-twenty. But that's what we have to work with to keep a responsible, balanced budget. And in summary, this budget funds a little over one-hundred-and-eighty full-time equivalent employees to perform municipal services. We have one additional physician in the assessor's office, because the two full-time people there are way over their head. They've been understaffed, and there's a lot more work that needs to be done. And the assessor's office is a very important component of our, of managing our resources from a tax standpoint and making sure that everyone is getting a fair evaluation on their property and that everyone's paying their fair share. The schools are funding six-hundred-and-sixty-five full-time equivalent positions, and they perform a variety of educational services for four-thousand-five-hundred-fifty-five students. I mentioned the restoration of funding to these departments, and we've allocated five-hundred thousand for capital improvement projects. That's just a very, very small portion of what's needed to fund six million dollars in needed infrastructure improvements. We'd like, we have a five-year plan to invest five million dollars in all of the roads in all of the districts, which would be one-and-a-quarter million dollars a year. And as you can see, five-hundred thousand won't quite touch that. And we still have dump trucks and other vehicles and equipment to maintain. So we have to make some hard decisions and come up with a plan to increase our revenues and funding strategies for services in the future. But this budget does hold the line on maintaining the service levels that we've provided in prior years without reducing hours of operation, programs, or services. Just to show.
Mr. Marshant?
Yes?
Hi, this is Jen Ludwig. I'm sorry, I had to call in from my phone. So can you just help us understand, though, the current budget does have a requested additional funds for asphalt? So for example, patching, potholes, things like that, versus the longer-term strategic planning you're talking about for actual more, you know, more than twenty to forty-five feet of road? Okay.
So the current budget is planning to maintain the roads we have, but it doesn't have funding to really do major road overlays, reconstructions, and the like to kind of renovate our worst areas. We're just trying to patch it and keep it going another year.
Thank you.
Excuse me, my, I have my computer plugged in, but the cord unplugged, just a second. I want to make sure I don't fall out of the meeting. There we go. Excuse me. So as you can see, to provide government services, it takes people. Employees represent sixty-one percent of the town budget and eighty percent of the school budget. You can't teach students without teachers and custodians and support personnel. You can't patch roads with robots. You still need people to operate and test and make sure everything's getting done. And so this is how the budget breaks down. And, you know, because you need the people you need, it's very difficult to make cuts in personnel without cutting your services. And then correspondingly, it's hard to make cuts in operational expenses, because they still need the tools, the trucks, and the machinery, and the resources to do their jobs. So coming in and just, I've concluded five weeks here in Coventry, and I found that, you know, we're running a very lean operation, and this is a very responsible budget that I hope the public can understand and appreciate. Everyone wants to know what's going to be the impact of a levy increase on their taxes. And in these columns, you can see that a zero-percent increase represents what is currently being paid in the current year. And if you have an assessed value of two-hundred thousand on your home, then it will go up to three-thousand-nine-hundred-twenty-eight dollars, an increase of one-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars. You know, less than twelve bucks a month. Obviously, if you have an assessed value that's higher, it's going to go up higher. If you have a tax freeze, well, your taxes don't change at all from year to year. So you get the same level of services or higher levels of service, regardless of the changes in rate, because you're on a tax freeze. So we're really looking for people that want to tell us what level of service they want. What level of government, what level of funding do they want to see the government invest in the services that the town enjoys? I've gotten a number.
Mr. Marshant, you dropped out.
His computer might have lost power.
Does anyone else have the presentation available? It might be easier for him if someone else can share it, if he's having trouble with his Wi-Fi when he gets back in.
He's online. Jean, are you able to find it?
You'd like me to? Certainly can.
And Kim, could you please dial Mr. Marshant's cell phone?
I am back.
Okay, excellent.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. We were looking for backups, but we're happy that you're here with us. So are you able to still share your screen?
Yeah, let me, I need to open the file backup. I need to open the file backup.
Do you have it, President Dixon?
I'm sorry, what?
Said I I also have it if.
Yeah, I I think I lost it on my remote desktop and.
We can, we can put it up because Jamie's pulled it up.
Okay, that would be great.
And then you could, you could read the slides.
Sure.
Okay. Jamie, if you could share your screen. Thank you. Okay. About two or three slides.
Thank you, Councilor LeBlanc. Appreciate the teamwork and the help.
That that was, yeah, we're on this.
Yeah, we were on the tax levy impact, and I was ready to go to the next slide.
I feel like you were going to mention some comments you've gotten from residents.
Oh, yes. So thank you, Councilor Shockley. I I've seen a number of questions from residents, and the reality is that we have voters and residents out there, some who are very happy with the the services that they have now, and they don't want to pay any more taxes, and they don't have any interest in seeing more spending in certain departments more than others. And there are people that aren't interested in supporting the proposed increases. And yet there are also others that we've heard from that very much do want to see an investment in the schools and in the roads and the parks because they recognize the impact of a healthy community has on their home values and the long-term livability of a community. So, you know, there isn't any one one-size-fits-all solution as far as what the public wants. In the end, it's going to come down to the preferences that the majority of the voters want and express at the election on the budget referendum, June tenth. But to give some reassurance, we are looking beyond this budget year because the town does have a lot of other interests and concerns that will take a lot longer to address. We're going to look at cost-reduction strategies in the form of fleet management programs and performance audits. We're going to look to see if there are other revenue sources we can develop through redesigning the sewer enterprise fund to have a better program to provide a more affordable way of delivering that service. We can look at recreation program services, fees for services, things that are, the user pays for what they use, and rather than having everyone pay for something through their taxes that some people use and other people don't. We're going to do some planning and look at updating the comprehensive plan, which has at least a ten- to twenty-year outreach outlook. We're going to look at doing a strategic plan to look at the next one to five years to see how we can best align our resources and advantages to the the maximum effect. And in the first year, I think it's really important that we just get some input from the community and have a better idea of what the residents value, what's important to them, so that we can build a better budget that represents their interests, desires, and priorities. We do have a lot of capital projects that we need to plan for. Infrastructure, building roads, improving the the water quality, making sure we have the equipment and good repair and on the road and ready to to do the work that we need to have done, as well as the many facilities that the town owns, municipal and schools. There needs to be a regular investment in maintaining the facilities we've had that the public's entrusted us with because they're so costly to replace. So it's a lot more affordable to maintain them and make them last. And then we have certain assets that we've received that I think we can, after the budget has been approved and is put to rest, we can focus on how are we going to utilize our federal stimulus funds to advance our highest priorities and help our operational budget be run at a lower cost and more efficiently because we can put better quality equipment on the road and have better infrastructure. You know, relieving us of a lot of the minor repairs that are consuming so much resources, but we're getting very little benefit out of it. So, next slide. So this is what it comes down to. You have the town of Coventry with all these services. And if you think about the the popularity of certain apps like GoFundMe or Kickstarter, government is the original crowdsourced funding strategy. It allows everyone to pay as little as possible to get the benefit of enjoying some really expensive things like schools, police, public works, libraries, parks, human services, and everything else that government does. It's certainly more affordable than everyone trying to do it on their own. I think the 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 parents of the community really learned to appreciate the value of teachers when they had to become teachers at home and support their kids. And it's not easy. It's not cheap. It's not something that we're we're taking for granted anymore. You know, having police that are well-trained and prepared to handle difficult situations, that's not something we take lightly anymore. We've seen a lot in the news in the last year. And with the changing values in society, we need people that are well-trained and prepared to provide the services in a friendly and professional manner. And so this is going to be our effort if this is what the public wants.
Mr. Marshawn, I believe that you're you are frozen. Jamie, is there another slide here? I don't think there is, right? Okay. Why don't I open it? Why don't I open it up to questions from the public? I'm sure that members of the council or the the schools could answer questions also until Mr. Marshawn comes back. Members of the public, are there any questions you'd like to add? Mr. Marshawn, back on. Okay, good. We were going to take over and answer.
My computer couldn't keep up with, my computer battery couldn't keep up with the recharge. So I'm on my phone now.
Okay, fine. Members of the public, I don't see any hands raised. Members of the council, do you have any questions for Mr. Marshawn?
Mr. Clements has his hand raised.
Okay, just went up. Mr. Clements.
Thank you once again. I think a great question. And what I heard from Mr. LeBlanc earlier this week, right? It's not just the incremental increase, it's the total cost to each of the individual taxpayers. But I think you guys, both school committee, town council, have done a great job representing the value that is received in Coventry. So, you know, again, there's information, misinformation, maybe misinterpretations of Coventry as a high tax rate. It costs a lot of money. Is there a way to compare, and it probably exists, like what a two hundred thousand to four hundred thousand dollar house pays in property taxes in equivalent communities where, you know, again, we've we've ranked our school districts were better than a lot of the places that people talk about as being this, you know, great school district or better school than what we have. Maybe that's based on appearances of the building. That's fine. But how do we compare on a dollar-for-dollar basis? And I think that is where Mr. LeBlanc, you know, pushes sometimes.
I think that's a very difficult question to ask, and I'm sure that there are. I know that there are rankings, like the best places to live if you want to retire, the best places to live if you want a good summer. But it's very difficult to compare communities, even in Rhode Island. Not not all of them offer the same resources. Not all communities have a bike path, and that is one of the natural beauties that we have. Not all of them have such well-groomed parks and available for recreation. So we could look for those communities, but I think we have to look at what are we getting in our community? Does it meet the needs of the members who are here? And what's the investment we want to make in our community so that it does represent the best of what we would like it to be? But I open it up to other members of council.
Absolutely, right? I I think, and it may be another way to spin it, right? That, you know, the earlier the other father mentioned, you know, going to a private daycare, right? I've I've had my kids in private daycare. That's eight to ten thousand dollars a year, right? Just for private daycare. When you look at what it costs per student, per household for the school district, it's two to three thousand dollars per year. And maybe I've got the numbers wrong there, but right, you're getting a huge return on investment, just like Mr. Marshawn has mentioned, you know, Town Manager Marshawn. This is funding Coventry and the services used across. So again, I think there's great value that that Coventry provides.
Yeah, I I think if anyone wants to do a comparison of other communities' tax rates to property values and services, it's very possible to do because every town in Rhode Island posts their budget on their website. But then you have to go to that effort of gleaning the information from the budget and doing the calculations and comparisons. And I know North Kingstown, they don't provide taxpayer-funded trash service. The residents there actually pay for it, like they do their power bill out of their pocket, thirty-five, forty bucks a month. And so whereas the Coventry residents are getting it for about thirteen dollars a month. And so you can't just divide the numbers and say we're comparing apples to apples because we provide some services, others don't, and others provide services we don't.
Totally agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. Mr. LeBlanc.
Just really quick, if I could just share my screen to answer Mr. Clements' question. We we do have on the Rhode Island State's website under Municipal Finance, ri.gov. It does, this is, the summary is on that website, and it actually shows every single municipality and all of their different real estate tax rates. It's not obviously sorted by tax rate, which I easily can do. I'll put it in Excel. I'll sort it by town and I'll post it for everybody to see. But I just wanted him to know that this information is readily available to everybody.
And we remind people to take that with a grain of salt, though, just based on what Town Manager Marshawn said in that that's just saying what we pay, but not what we're paying for.
I agree, but you could add, you could add a column of a number of residents in the town. You could, I I agree with you wholeheartedly. It doesn't tell the whole story. But rather than going town by town and trying to recreate it, it is readily available. That was my point.
Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. LeBlanc, and it is valuable source of information for people who want to look at those particular figures. But how do you measure the safety, how safe you feel in a community? How well do you measure how healthy you feel in a community? How well do you measure how safe people or students feel when they are in school, especially during COVID time? Some of these things are very difficult to measure, and it doesn't all appear in the numbers on a chart. Mr. Murray.
No, I think it was good points, actually. Councilman LeBlanc brought up something I was going to say, which was that some of this information is available. To everyone's point, it's very difficult to evaluate. I have done that. And maybe, you know, I put out videos last year actually showing some of these analysis. One of the things you need to keep in mind, though, when you're looking at tax rate, it's based on your total assessment value, which in many communities, if you take coastal communities, you have houses that are much more money to buy. Many people come to Coventry because for many of the working class here, it's a good value. So you can buy a reasonable home in a safe community that has a reasonable median tax rate and has a substantial amount of services. And so when you're really comparing that to other towns, and I think one of our previous colleagues mentioned this, is he moved here because it was a good value, right? It was a good neighborhood he moved into, looked at the school system, the whole, the whole package. So while we can break it down financially, it's important that, to Mr. LeBlanc's point, we'd have to add all those other columns. And to Mr. Dixon's point, you really have to also add in the qualitative or qualitative value of the community. You can't quantify, you know, some of the features that we have that others don't. So, but it's a great point by Mr. Clements.
Thank you. Mr. Pearson.
Yep, to further expand on this point, you know, we can't leave school analysis out of the picture. So if you go to Rides' website, they have a a section on where they have school report cards. And using the tool they have available, you can actually, with various metrics that they keep track of, you can compare communities that way. So I do recommend going to the Rhode Island Department of Education's website and start looking at the school report cards and and looking at some of the data. You can do enrollment, graduation rates, and they they measure a number of other things. It's a useful point to collect some information.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from members of the public? I want Ms. Costelli, Mr. Wasik, please allow in, Ms. Costelli.
Hello?
Hello?
Oh, okay. I didn't know if you can hear me. Thanks for having this on a Saturday.
Thank you. Please state your your name and your address, please, for the record.
Lisa Costelli, fifteen Chopin Street. My question was on the tax freeze. Is that based on age or income?
It is based on age. There's specific criteria listed in the ordinance, and it's on the website.
Okay, so if you have people that are over sixty-five and their income is high and they can't afford to pay the taxes, why are they eligible for a tax freeze?
That's the way the ordinance was written in nineteen ninety-nine.
Now, is there ways of changing that ordinance?
Yes.
That was my question, because we could receive more income from the people that can't afford to pay taxes that do have a tax freeze just because they were over sixty-five.
Since since I'm new here, I have a strong interest in kind of looking at everything holistically, top to bottom, soup to nuts, of what it, how this town is structured and not only funding its services, but how it's delivering those services. So on the revenue side and the expense side, I want to get a really good understanding. I want to do an evaluation. But obviously, that's going to take a lot longer than a few weeks before the next budget election. So that's why I'm looking to the future and having these three, five, and ten-year plans where we can systematically go through everything, look at it, provide a report to the public so that everyone can really see and understand what it is that we have and the totality of costs and benefits for running our community.
Okay, and I just have one more question I was curious about. On Wednesday, you showed the line items, and on the police side, there was a line item for fringe benefits. What is that for?
So that would include their health and dental and wellness and uniform allowance. A lot of these are stipulated in the collective bargaining bargaining agreement with their union contract. And they have other pension benefits as well. So altogether, that that would include everything in addition to their base salary.
Okay, I was just curious what that was for. That's all my questions. Have a good afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us again this morning, Ms. Costelli. Any other questions for members of the public? Okay, members of the council. I see no other questions. Okay, seeing none, I just will remind people that there is a regular town council meeting on May tenth. And I appreciate everyone attending that meeting. Yes.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I'm just traveling in the car. So I did have one general comment as we think about this budget process. And from my own personal standpoint, I need to represent people that are in my district, whether they have children, whether they do not. And when I look at the the proposed budget, the one area that I I'm still just kind of thinking about and wanting to really understand is the numbers we're putting forward, do they make sense? The meaning of balanced budget and whether we're using funding in the best way to set us up for success in the future. And what I mean is whether it's appropriate to use fund balance and and COVID money for long-term expenditures. So that is something that I'm continuing to think about for all members who would be impacted by this budget for everybody in town. I have met separately and offline with Superintendent Levis, with Mr. Sands, with Mr. Marshawn, and I'm still taking information from the people in my district, phone calls, emails. And I'm still taking information from the people in my district, phone calls, emails. I put my cell phone number out there, and so I am considering all of this, uh, before we meet later this month to decide on this budget, as I, as I assume all the counselors are. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. LeBlanc?
Uh, just like to dovetail off of, uh, Member Ludwig's commentary, um, I guess if if we keep, we, we keep on going over a three point nine five percent, but, um, is there gonna be a chance, if we could maybe talk about like a two percent budget and what that would look like? I, I know that it's been a consistent message, we're, we're doing this three point nine five. Uh, I have concerns about the three point nine five, I was very vocal about it, um, about a month ago. Uh, but we, we keep on talking about this three point nine five one, so I just, I didn't know if we could just maybe talk about a lower budget, what that would look like at a future meeting. I just, I, I do think about, uh, people in my district that just got, um, hit with very large sewer assessments. The sewer rate just went up, um, so, I, I mean, I just wanted to know if we could see a, a separate budget, maybe what, uh, two percent would look like, or two and a half.
Thank you for the question. On May seventeenth, the manager will recommend a budget to the town council. At that point, the town council may make any amendment it wishes, uh, to, um, to change that budget before a vote is taken. So that is always a possibility, and if there are questions that you have about what a two percent budget will look like, uh, that question could be submitted to Mr. Marchand ahead of time, so that when we get to the meeting on the seventeenth, that can be addressed.
Okay, I will submit that, thank you.
President Dixon and Counselor LeBlanc, to that point, um, I would refer people to the slides from my presentation last Monday on the third. Was it the third or the fifth? Um, the, the third. And, uh, in that slide, I did show the difference in, uh, tax levy increase that a two percent level of uh, levy rate would, would be that we'd have to reduce the budget by, uh, over a million dollars that, from what has been proposed. And we can fund anything, uh, it's simply a matter of the cuts we'll have to make to make that work. I had asked for a direction from the council on what kind of budget they would like to see and what direction we would like to go. But as I recall, the preference was to wait to hear from the public and meet with, uh, the constituents in each of the districts uh, before, to get a better idea of what the community's interest is in supporting a municipal budget. And so what I presented was what was kind of here when I got here. Uh, a balanced budget that was proposed and advertised, and that's what we've been speaking to. So, uh, if yet, anyone has any questions about, uh, the impacts of a different, different levy rate increase, uh, one percent, two percent, three percent, I'd be happy to discuss that with them. And, uh, again, uh, unless I get other direction from the council about, uh, what to prepare for a presentation on the seventeenth. I just have the budget that has been developed thus far.
Just to follow, uh, to that, so I, I do know on a slide, you, you mentioned dollar amount, but I, I just don't know what that dollar amount, what the cuts would be. I didn't know if we, um, could go department by department, what a two percent would do to each department. That, that's what I was looking for, not just a, a single dollar. But, uh, again, I will, I will submit, uh, an email to you subsequent to this meeting.
Uh, submit the question, and if you want to see, uh, department by department rather than a total amount, please be very inclusive in the questions that you ask ahead of time, and that way Mr. Marchand can be prepared with his recommendation. And everyone will have full information. And, um, let me see, we have a question from Mr. Murray.
Yeah, uh, one question, one comment. Well, I guess one ask, I'll, I'll call it ask, is that if you go down the road of looking at less than the recommended amount, involve us in that discussion, because what has happened in the past is council meets, and then, you know, let's say they decide to reduce to a two percent. We're not part of the discussion, because I think to Mr. LeBlanc's point, we also have to tell the public what that means, right? It's easy to say, we're gonna cut five hundred thousand dollars out of the budget, but what does that translate to in services? So it's, it's easy for Mr. Marchand to maybe translate that on the town side, but we need the courtesy of translating that on the school side on what the value of the services cut would mean to this, the school district. And so we need to be hopefully involved in that conversation, so if you go down that road, um, we come back, I, I would hope that we would be, um, proactive in that and then letting, letting the school district know what's, what's at stake. The la, the next, the last comment I'll make is, um, one thing that stuck with me, we had a meeting yesterday about just general communications about the budget. And we, we talked a lot about this, but one of the things that really stuck with me is at the very end of the meeting, there's actually somebody that, uh, Councilwoman Dixon invited to the meeting to get a different perspective, somebody who voted against the budget in the past. And as I talked to that gentleman, you know, I said, why did you, why have you voted for, uh, against the budgets in the past? And he said, well, because the schools are broken. And that stuck with me quite a bit, uh, until today, um, obviously because I'm bringing it up. And I, and I thought about, how do I convince people who think both the town and the schools are broken to, to change their attitude over time? And, and I don't think there's a silver bullet to that, but the one thing I would ask is people, you know, when you really take the time to look around, right? Maybe your impression from ten years ago, five years ago, two years ago. Keep an open mind as you move forward. Look at the council in front of you, look at the school committee in front of you. Look at the work that's being done for the building efforts and, and look at, look at our graduate, graduates that are coming out and going to colleges and Ivy League schools. Look at the athletes like tonight that are gonna be performing at Cranston Stadium. Look at the town as a whole and look at the progressions that we have made, but this thought that somehow we can get the prosperity by cutting the budget or holding us hostage every year is a false narrative, right? You can't expect improvement and change and then say, but you have to do it with no money. Um, I have to believe that once there's trust built in leadership and then we're moving in the right direction, that people eventually say, okay, we're willing to give you a benefit of the doubt. So for those that, I think the narrative has to be with those who are, are not voting for the budget, or if you encounter people in the community and say, when is the last time you really tuned in, right? Because the narrative has changed, and I think that's important for all of us. So, um, I keep that gentleman Bob in my thoughts, because that is the, the perspective that I, I have to drive and change over time. How do we get people from the system is broken to feeling proud about their communities? So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray, and as you know, uh, the town council is committed to working with the school committee. And Mr. Marchand has had many meetings with, uh, the leadership over in the schools. Uh, spoken with Mr. Sands, with Mr. Levis, um, so we have had regular meetings and we will continue to do so. And I think your story about, uh, what is in the minds of the people is well taken, and I'm gonna make it very simple. Many of us have gone to a restaurant and had a bad meal. We may not have been back to that restaurant for three, four, or five years, and we have in our mind the vision of that one meal that was not good. And we need to go back sometimes and say, have things changed? And sometimes I find that people who are most negative about the schools in general have had an experience with their children that took place sometimes five or ten years ago. But that memory has stayed in their mind and they have never returned to the table to see what is different. So we do need to invite people to come back to the table to see what is different in our schools. It's very important. Um, we have a hand raised, it is to Marchand.
Thank you. Uh, to add to the discussion, um, when it comes to deciding budget, uh, you know, revenues, uh, allocations, um, i- if you, if, if you want to cut the budget by one million dollars or two million dollars, I don't know how that's going to be done, because I don't know what the expectation is. If it's supposed to be shared, uh, proportionately between the town and the schools, those cuts. Uh, if it's supposed to be shared equally, if it's supposed to be only on the school side, we're gonna make those cuts, or only on the town side. It, because that's a political decision about what level of investment we're gonna make where. And I don't have a really good basis to say, if, if I have to cut the proposed budget by one million or two million, how that ought to be. You have, uh, proposed budgets by the, the school, uh, district, um, the school committee. There've been several sessions and many questions asked, and it really comes down to the town council's understanding of the preferences and needs of the community for how to go forward with a recommended budget. So if you just say, we're gonna reduce the, uh, levy to require one and a half million to be taken out of the proposed budget, I would ask, how do you propose I do that? Is that a problem on the school side, on the town side, or a little bit of both? You know, to some degree, uh, the other point I wanted to bring up, which maybe this isn't a very good illustration, but uh, if you're gonna pay the, the neighbor boy to mow your lawn, and you know it takes fifteen dollars of gas to mow the lawn, but you only give him twelve, he's just gonna run out of gas and the, the job's not gonna get done. Some, some expenses are what they are, and by shorting it, you're just gonna short the work, you're not gonna save money or get a, a better product, so, um, our job i- as administrators, Mr. Levis and I both, is to try to get the whole lawn mowed with whatever resources we have at our disposal. And maybe there are gonna be opportunities mid-year to find savings or find revenues that were not anticipated in the original budget. But what we're proposing is our best budget, our best understanding of how to manage the, the revenues we need with the expenses we're expected to make.
Okay, thank you. Ms. So, uh, Superintendent Levis, you had your hand up, do you wish to make another comment?
Yeah, I, I think, uh, but Mr. Marchand said it, uh, closed, you know, very eloquently, I just feel that. And I've said this all along, the questions that are asked by, by school committee, by council, I, I get a lot of feedback, and I, I tell people, like, I need to work with everybody. So I can tell you that I will get, I assume I will get questions from people about the comment Mr. LeBlanc made about two percent. And so just to know where I'm coming from, I watched your council meeting or the meeting we had with you. Um, but it was your council meeting where Dr. Dixon, you brought up a part about scare tactics and bringing up, I can tell you that, um, you know, the school committee has approved the budget, we're gonna find a way to, to meet that, we have additional funds um, to provide services. Um, my concern is a two percent budget. If you bring that out, um, it's gonna be devastating, and there goes the scare tactics. And that's the narrative that we're trying to change in this community. I think I mentioned it earlier. People go to these other school systems because they're tired of the narrative in Coventry, that's what I get. They're tired of the politics, they're tired of, um, people, um, you know, just threatening cuts. And these are not threats. If we go to a two percent budget, I think, you know, Mr. Marchand, while he's just jumping in, I think he did an incredible job to talk about the services. So I just want people, and I hear the council say all the time about your constituents, your constituents, we have these public meetings. And I think I brought this up at the last council, we didn't have a lot of pushback with the budget, we didn't have a lot of pushback with the school budget last year, but we were level funded. So I just question, and again, this is a rhetorical question, because you know your constituents, but, uh, the, you know, I think if we're gonna be consistent, I want to know your beliefs all along, because I hear say, well, my constituents, but then I hear people say, as an individual, I'm concerned. To me, the last thing I'll say is, if you're concerned about us using COVID funds or our fund balance for operations, I don't see the logic in cutting us revenue, like, doesn't, to me, doesn't make sense. Because at the end of the day, we still need to do what we need to do, so I'm committed to work with the council, with, obviously with our school committee, with Mr. Marchand, Ms. Mills, but I, I'm just concerned of the conversation, because I think it puts us in a no-win situation moving forward. And I guess I'll be asking the questions about, because I, I love what Ms. Ludwig said closing of our last meeting about making the decision about the type of community you want to live in. And I think it goes back to that, you can't have it both ways, right? And so, you know, I'm hoping that we, we, we can work forward, move forward, so that we can put ourselves in a position where we can have sustainable budgets moving forward. But anything that puts us in a hole further is going to be devastating moving forward. Like I said, I believe we'll get through this year no matter what, but that's all I can promise. So I just wanted to make those points, but I, I do appreciate Mr. Marchand, his willingness and support. Just being here five weeks, but I find him a phenomenal partner to work with, and I want to thank him.
President Dixon. Thank you, Superintendent Levis. Uh, Ms. Ludwig.
Um, I, I would like to make a personal statement, uh, to Mr. Levis's, um, mention earlier. Similar to my approach in January, um, I am not thinking about percentages. I am not here to negotiate percentages between zero and four. I want to see, what do we need to operate? What is a reasonable and responsible budget? And that's what I'm willing to put in front of the voters, and that is without any feedback, that is coming from my personal vote. And so to me, it's less about the percentage, because, for example, if we say four percent, zero percent, two percent, we saw all three of those scenarios last year, all were voted down. I'll, I'll give you an example, I'll call him Mr. Bob, I have Mr. Bob in the, in my constituent group, or in our constituent group. Mr. Bob told me, in January, I'm not approving anything over two percent. Okay, I took that feedback, it was one point nine percent, and he still didn't approve it. So I'm not playing guessing games on percentages, I need to know what we need to operate with a reasonable and responsible budget. And that's personally how I will be voting, and that's how I'll be speaking to the constituents in my district. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe that Mr. Marchand has presented us with a budget in which he says, this is what we need to operate. This is, we'll maintain the services that the people have now, it doesn't add to services, it just says, this is what we need to do to operate, to cover our existing expenses, we have contractual obligations, pensions, et cetera, what do we need to operate? So I believe that he has presented what he believes is a reasonable budget based on the needs of the community and his analysis based on discussions with department heads. Um, other questions?
Uh, just two final comments, if I can.
Mr. Clements has his hand up as well.
Okay.
Just because it's a public meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Clements.
Thanks for having me back, appreciate the time. Uh, I had a question, an earlier caller kind of triggered, uh, something I remembered seeing in, I believe it was Monday's presentation. You know, there's a fixed element to the budget, uh, I believe it was somewhere in the ten to twelve million, you know, about maybe ten percent of the budget that is just fixed costs. Some of that was defined pensions, um, you know, and there's a big chunk that was maybe five to six million dollars, I probably have the numbers wrong. That was just police-defined pension benefits. Is there a sunset, right? We talk about planning for the next ten to twenty years of Coventry, um, is there a sunset for that five million dollars? Will that be decreasing over the next couple of years? Um, you know, how do we anticipate that going down? Um, and I guess the reason I touch on it, right, you drive around town, we talk about the politics of today, you know, this town, I see signs everywhere that say, you and we support our local police. This budget, whether it's two percent or four percent, supports salaries for police, teachers, you know, staff, recreation. There's an advocacy, advocacy group for every single department, I don't know if the department heads are still here, you know, I heard, uh, Rainan Blumenthal talking earlier this week, I probably mispronounced her name, on all the groups that use the fields in the town. All of these groups, are we reaching out to them as each of the department heads touching base with the people who've had individual experiences with Coventry? You talked about people who had bad experiences, who's had good experiences, are we reaching out to them and saying, hey, we need your support now, did you have a good time? I know that was, you know, the basis of the conversation yesterday, maybe you heard the negative side, uh, I think there's a lot of positive out there to engage in.
Thank you. We had a communications planning meeting yesterday afternoon. We talked about how to reach, uh, people who have had good experiences and how to promote the vote. Uh, we are limited as to what we can say as public officials, um, using public funds. Um, so we are looking for alternative sources so that we can put up some signs, um, in appropriate places and do other kinds of promotions for the budget. Uh, so we are looking into those positive stories, but I think we've heard positive stories on the slide set that Mr. Levis and Mr. Marchand have produced. We have any other questions, but thank you for your comment, Josh. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes, at, at the end of the day, um, with this three nine five, residents just need to ask themselves, if they have a two hundred thousand dollar home, do they, do they want to pay three hundred and twenty-seven dollars a month? If they have a three hundred thousand dollar home, do they want to pay four hundred and ninety-one dollars a month? And if they have a four hundred thousand dollar home, do they want to pay six hundred and fifty-four? And if they have a $400,000 home, do they want to pay $654? Reason why I say it that way is because we always talk about the increase and how much it is per week, per month. So I just wanted to call that out. Two more things. In the lawn mowing example that Mr. Marshant used, the $15, $12 and getting the lawn done, my concern is, are we saying that we need an additional lawnmower to help mow the lawn right now? Because we, we're getting it done right now, but we're adding additional staff during this year. I'm asking, do we really need that additional staff? And the last thing I want to bring up is, I, I would like to know the COVID money, how much we're getting and can we use it for some of the infrastructure? We talk about asphalt. Can we use some of that money for infrastructure? I don't know the answer right now. I would like to know that before June 10th. I mean, that's just one. And then there's, can we offset some salary costs with COVID, just like the school is doing? Can we do it on the town side? I would like to know that because that obviously would play into the percentage or dollars that Ms. Ludwig was, a member Ludwig was bringing up. So those are some of my final questions, but, or comments. Thank you.
Okay, so I would, I would encourage all, each member of the town council to submit in writing questions to Mr. Marshant so that he can start to prepare responses to those. And if we need to have a special meeting, an additional meeting before the 10th, we certainly can do so so that we can cover some of these issues because the 10th is, is a date by which we need to vote. And we may need more time to make some deliberations with the data that we receive. So we'll see what questions that can be submitted to him, hopefully by Monday or Tuesday morning. And we can make some decisions about whether we need an additional meeting. That's certainly possible. Okay, so I'm asking members to submit questions not only to Mr. Marshant, but if they have questions for the superintendent, please do so. And I also encourage members of the school committee and the public, if they have questions, please submit them to Mr. Marshant also. Mrs. Shockley.
Thank you. I just want to say that I appreciate Mr. Marshant's explanation that he put forth the budget that would keep the, keep the town where we are without moving backwards. So I appreciate that that's the budget we're putting forward and just noting the fact that every other budget that could, there are numerous budgets that could be put out there. People would just have to decide what it is that they're willing to no longer have. I looked at information that Mr. Marshant shared that in 20 years, this town is going to be celebrating its tricentennial. And what town do we want to be celebrating in 20 years? I think we definitely have to make sure we're putting money into infrastructure. I think Mr. LeBlanc's suggestion that COVID money be used towards things like asphalt and fixing challenges that we've been seeing for years. One time or at least long-term expenses, not one time, being paid for with COVID. And I know that we're, you know, COVID can't be part of our operating budget. COVID is those things that maybe we could remove from our operating budget in the future. So I really appreciate Mr. LeBlanc, you know, putting forth that idea. I think it's a great idea. Would love more community input as far as what people would like to see those additional monies spent on because no matter what percentage of our budget it is, it is additional monies. You know, there are things like the employees that are being put back in. You know, because they're not one-time expenses, that isn't where I'd like to see it spent. But like I said, this is a community effort. This is community input. I appreciate the people who took the time on a Saturday morning to be part of this meeting. I appreciate that questions were asked. I'm really hopeful that on the 17th, once the council decides what budget we're going to be putting forth, that you see the effort that was put in to both ask questions ourselves and engage the community that we're not trying to be a survey of one, that we're really trying to see what the town is looking to have. You know, and note that we've gotten some great feedback from people who do want us to continue to move forth and are willing to take that increase to their tax rate. What I'd like to see this year is at least 5,000 people vote because when people are out there saying, no. We said no. You, you said no, but that doesn't mean that the town said no. You said yes, but that doesn't mean that the town said yes. It's such a small percentage of our population really going out there and caring about this budget. Anyone on this phone call, tell five friends and neighbors, June 10th is the vote. Tell them to vote. If they ask you your opinion, by golly, give it to them. But just have them go out there and vote however they feel is best. We hope it's a yes because of the effort put in. But I'd like to see a larger percentage of my neighbors really put out what they think of our budget and what they would like to see our town do. So thank you all for being here.
President Dixon, are we, are we allowed to, I mean, this is a question for council that we can seek offline since it's 12:36. Are we allowed to say things like approve the budget? I mean, we have, I don't know even how that works. Can we, can we take that discussion offline? Because I, I had a constituent just text me and say, can you, can you say to approve the budget? First off, we don't have the official budget that's going on the 10th. And secondly, yeah, and secondly, I don't, I don't even know if we can say that. So maybe, you know, just to address that offline, we have to.
I can address that very simply if you like.
Yes, thank you.
As elected officials to represent your district, you have the right to express your opinion on any matter publicly. The difference is, is the, it is not appropriate to expend taxpayer dollars to influence the vote. So that's the point that we can't use tax dollars to tell people how to vote yes or no on a budget, approve or reject, or for this candidate or that candidate, but the elected officials are within their right and prerogatory to, to say so. Oh, we have our counsel on the line.
Yes, we have our legal counsel, Mr. D'Agostino. Mr. D'Agostino.
Yes, Council President Dixon and members of the council. Mr. Marshant is correct. The, while you can't expend money, taxpayer money advocating a position, thank goodness council members do not lose their First Amendment rights to advocate for whatever position they want to advocate for, including passage of, of a budget measure. So you can rest assured that you do have that, that ability to, to speak for or against a budget proposal. And, and I hope that answers the question.
It does answer the question and reaffirms what Mr. Marshant has said and what we also talked about in our planning meeting for communications yesterday afternoon. And I also want to emphasize that any members of the council, public, et cetera, should be sending in questions to Mr. Marshant and Mr. Levis in order to get questions answered. Reiterate that if we need an additional meeting to discuss budget issues, we certainly can add one, not an issue. But I also would like to mention that the town budget is a small percentage of the total budget that is being offered to the public. So even if the town was, were able to use COVID money to reduce some expenses, et cetera, that does not necessarily mean that you're going to see a big change in a recommended tax levy. So we just have to bear that in mind. But Mr. Marshant has made some very good points. He needs some direction from the council as to which way he wants, which way we want to go. And that seems to me to be another additional question. Mrs. Shockley, thank you for reiterating the need for people to get out to vote. All of us have done what we need to do at every single election to get out the vote, to encourage voters. And I would like to remind people that we have been asked and talked about changes in our form of governance in how we approve budgets. And people say, we want the people to decide. We want the people to decide. But the people, it's a very, very small number of people who are deciding. Yes, it is more than we used to get at a town financial meeting, but it's still a small percentage of people. We don't do exit polling. We don't really know what's in the mind of people who vote. So we really, at this point, it seems like we do not have a shared vision of what we want for our community. And it's very important for us as elected officials to go out, dig and understand what is the shared vision so that we can then present it appropriately in the form of a budget. Mr. Clement, did you have any hand up again? I don't see any more hands. Any other questions? Seems like we've got a lot of work to do. That's all a good thing. All right. Seeing no other hands, may I have a motion to adjourn at? Thank you, Mr. Shark.
I'll second it.
Second, thank you. Roll call, Ms. Ludwig.
Yes.
Mrs. Shockley.
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc.
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon. Foyers, no nays. The motion is adjourned at 12:40 PM. Thank you so much and have a good day. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Happy Mother's Day, everyone.
Happy Mother's Day, ladies.
Thank you.